Someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Dr. McClary, second. Mr. Mecca, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except Mrs. Vasquez. I would like to ask Dr. McClary to lead us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the mission of liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency, an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone turn their cell phones and other electronic devices to silent. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to add an addendum to the consent agenda personnel and approve the agenda as amended? Mrs. Leatherboro, second. Mrs. Van Sies, discussion?
Is there another executive session?
Yes.
Would you add that, please, on your adjourned motion?
First we vote. Can we add the executive session on this item or that's a separate?
No. To add an addendum to the consent agenda personnel, add an executive session and approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. So would like someone like to make a motion to add an addendum to the consent agenda personnel, adding a addendum to the end for an executive session? Mrs. Leatherboro, second. Mrs. Van Sies, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any board acknowledgements? None? Okay. Mrs. Beeger, would you like to read the board's public expression statement, please?
I'm not sure if there are any for this evening yet, but I will read it. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. Thank you. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you can conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means that we will not be engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another. Please speak to the issues, giving ideas, sharing opinions, but not engaging in personal attack. Thank you for your cooperation. And we have one speaker today, Ron Schubert.
Couldn't keep me away. Actually, the last time I spoke to the school board was 20 years ago, so it's been a long time. First of all, I want to say good evening to everyone and welcome back the old board and the new members. And I also want to state that I'm speaking tonight as a parent and not a representative of PTSA Council. Just want to make that clear. And I wanted to talk about just one thing, and I know tonight you're going to be talking about board goals and you'll be working on them later tonight. As many of you recall, this past spring, Dr. Martzloff proposed continuing class size reductions for the 2017-18 academic year to include grades three and four. The reduction to our class size guidelines for three and four would have been one student for each grade. Unfortunately, due to budget constraints, we were unable to reduce class size for grade four, but we are reducing class size for grade three by one student. As a board goal, I get mixed up here. It's either goal or activity, or maybe it's both. I would suggest continuing this plan Dr. Martzloff initiated of reducing class size and hopefully for 2018-19, class size for grade four can be reduced by one, and perhaps the reduction can also pass up to grade five. I know this is an ambitious goal, budget dependent, but hopefully it is a goal that can be met. Thanks very much. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Okay, thank you very much.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and addendums as presented? Mr. Mecca, second. Mrs. Van Sies, discussion? Yes.
I have a question regarding the budget item, the budget transfers. Could I get a little bit more information regarding the CCLS amount of money for $18,390 as well as the substitute service for $48,554? I'm just curious what the CCLS amount is going to specifically? And also with the substitute service, I'm assuming that's AESOP, and I believe that started last year, so I was curious as to why additional money was needed.
AESOP was started last year. However, when the budget came through for BOSEs, it was not included in that budget, so we had to make this change or alteration to be able to pay for the service for our school district. In terms of the other item you mentioned, I'll turn it over to Dr. Baylen to share some information. Dr. Baylen?
Can you just clarify again, because I don't have, and I'm not looking at what you have?
The items on Common Core Learning Standard, I believe it said implementation, or no, objectives. So the budget transfers for $18,390 support instructional programs with the Common Core Learning objectives. And I was curious what that money was being spent on specifically?
I think Mr. Matursky actually would be able to address that. Thank you.
That's for the Learning A to Z program that was completed by the district. And the way the BOSEs budget works is that we do the budget planning in January. New programs such as the HR program as well as this program, which was required in a change order fashion later in the 16-17 school year, were not yet included in the billing process for BOSEs. They were included in our total BOSEs budget, but when we have the final bill that now we are paying, we have to realign what is our district budget, which is in place for these items, to the way it's billed by every one BOSEs, and that's the reason for the transfers.
And Learning A to Z, I'm familiar with it. It's a subscription.
Correct.
So is that subscription being available, is it being made available to just ENL teachers or all classroom teachers?
Sorry, Mrs. Leatherboro, it's back to me. I can speak to that. We actually have worked closely with our schools at one point in time. Various schools had purchased their own licenses directly from the vendor when we had heard so much from teachers, and it was classroom teachers, reading specialists, ESOL teachers, special education teachers, really teachers in many capacities, that they were also interested in using the program. And as you know, the program has expanded over the years, so it includes RAS kids, it includes vocabulary writing, and some other resources for content area instruction. What we had looked at is doing more of a district purchase. So at this point, we have licenses available at all of the elementary schools and in some select special education settings at the middle level.
That's wonderful. It's a great resource. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Martzloff, would you like to introduce the new assistant principal for Mill Middle School, please?
Absolutely. With us this evening is Hillary Weir, who was our successful candidate and just approved as our new assistant principal at Mill Middle School. Congratulations, Hillary. She brings with us a wealth of experience from school districts in Virginia as well as DePew, where she's been an instructional coach, a dean of students, and now high school assistant principal. So we're so pleased to introduce her to the board this evening. And Hillary, congratulations, and I'd like to invite you to the podium to say a few words.
Thank you so much. I really am honored to be here with you today. I'm really excited to become a Mill Mustang. I got my blue on already and be really a great member of the Williamsville Central School District. So I'm really excited to start. We've already been in lots of communications already and already got a few things in the works, so I'm really excited and I thank you for the opportunity.
And I'd also like to introduce to the board our new acting assistant principal for Casey Middle School, Mr. Chris McDuffie. Mr. McDuffie, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Martzloff. I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Martzloff, and Mr. Peter Dobmeyer for the opportunity to serve as the interim assistant principal of Casey Middle School. It is an honor and a privilege to work with such great students and an amazing staff. I look forward to the opportunity, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
I would like to thank the following retiree for her service in the district, Nancy Santa Cruz, High Middle Part-Time Teacher's Aid, for 29 years of service to the district. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the organization meeting held on July 5, 2017? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Dr. McClary, discussion? All in favor? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Actually, I think Mr. Mecca abstained. Sorry. I'm sorry. Let's take that again. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. President's Report: Upcoming Events. The August graduation is Monday, August 21, at 6:00 p.m. in the district boardroom. Mrs. Leatherboro, Dr. McClary, Mr. Meyer, and myself, we will all be attending. Is anyone able to attend the graduation? Anybody else? Yes?
I want to speak on that very briefly. We've had some conversations amongst the leadership team as recently as today about the number of students who are available for the summer school graduation ceremony. So I want the board to know we may be changing that to like a morning time get-together informal celebration, something a little different than the evening more formal ceremony for summer school graduates. So I just want to make you aware of that. I will let the board know via email between now and the date. I think it's Monday, the 21st of August. Let you know between now and then what exactly is going to happen. So I appreciate the board members' flexibility with that as we finalize it.
The New Year Teacher Orientation Breakfast hosted by the Board of Education is Tuesday, August 22, at 7:45 a.m. at Sean Patrick's Restaurant. Dr. McClary and myself will be attending. Is anyone else available to attend? Nope? Opening Day for Staff is Tuesday, August 29, at 7:15 a.m. in the North High School Auditorium. Who will be attending opening day?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that start at 7:15 a.m. or does that start at 8:00 a.m.? The program is?
It begins at 8:00 a.m. There is an opportunity to get some coffee and things like that around 7:15, 7:30-ish, and so you're welcome to come to that as well.
It's my open.
I do know from years of experience, you want to get there early because the parking lot fills very quickly.
Went last year, but it's my opening day, so.
Understand?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, who kind of time? Okay, Mrs. Van Sies. Dr. McClary? I know I will be in attendance. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Erie County Association of School Boards, Western New York Education Law Conference was this last Wednesday. Mrs. Leatherboro, Mr. Mecca, Mr. Meyer, Mrs. Van Sies, and I all attended. If anybody that attended liked to comment on the conference?
I'll just make a brief comment.
Please, thank you.
It was just very informative. This was my second time attending, and it just really gives you a very up-to-date, you know, memo on where we're at in regards to basically all of education law, especially like special education, student services, and so on. So I found it very informative. Thank you for allowing me to go.
I would just agree with Mrs. Van Sies, although I didn't attend this year. I've attended in the past. It's been a terrific opportunity to network with colleagues and also hear from prominent education attorneys within the field in Western New York. This year also, so that the board knows, not only did the leadership team have an opportunity to attend, but we also invited each of the principals to pay at the district's expense so that they wouldn't have to pay from their own professional development codes. And I think it was a good experience for all of our principals to be there and to learn firsthand all this information.
I will say I was surprised at the amount of attendance from our own district that was there. It was a very positive effect. I do have a copy of all the slides that were presented for all the classes. For those that were unable to attend, if you're interested in any of the meeting notes or anything like that, I'd be happy to share it with anybody. A calendar of events for the Erie County Association of School Board was in your packet. Committee representatives and alternates are asked to mark your calendars accordingly, please. I plan to represent the district and attend the Erie County Association of School Board Leadership Reception on August 24, FYI. Okay, under New York State School Board Association, three board members have been registered to attend the convention in Lake Placid on October 11 through the 14th. I will be serving as the delegate. Mr. Meyer will be serving as the alternate. Mrs. Leatherboro will also be attending, and I am also registered to attend the pre-conference law seminar on the Thursday morning. Any questions or discussion on that? Mrs. Beeger attended the Summer Law Conference in Rochester on July 20. Our report was included in this packet. Mrs. Beeger, would you like to comment on the event?
Sure. It was very interesting because it was more of an informative conference at the state level. It was in Rochester, not as close to home. There was a lot of discussion about some changes that are happening at the federal level, but that, those changes really aren't impacting us at the state because our state rulings are still valid for our schools. So there was a lot of clarification for different cases and that we are still to follow guidance under New York law, which was very interesting. Conversations about just updates and different programs and qualifications, things that will be coming to us. It was very informative, a good use of time. So thank you for sending me. I learned a lot, and there's a report in here for everyone to read as well.
Thank you. Are there any other New York State School Board Association matters that any would like to discuss? Community forums. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to hold the three board community forums as follows? Saturday, November 18, 2017, 9:00 a.m. until noon at East High School. Wednesday, January 31, 2018, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the North High School. And Saturday, April 28, 2018, 9:00 a.m. until noon at South High School. Mrs. Leatherboro, second. Mrs. Van Sies, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Board Visitation Dates. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to adapt the purpose, expectation, and reporting form from board visitations and approve the board visitation schedule as presented in your packet? Mrs. Beeger, second. Mrs. Van Sies, discussion?
I just have a question about this. I don't recall seeing reports on this last year. Is this that the president will do the report and we do the visitation? Or are we going to take turns assigning someone to do the report?
I think it's been done informally differently the past couple of years. I know the president has done the report. I'm going to actually kind of ask everybody that attends to kind of submit a report to me, even if it's just an informal, a paragraph, a blurb of what you hear, what you observed, and I'm going to kind of take that as a summary up to the actual board report that I will present to the entire board, if that's okay. Any other discussion?
I'm fine with that idea because I think some of us may have different discussions with different people, and then that would give an overall summary of.
That's my personal hope. I can't work the whole room with 200 people, 100 people in there, so I try, but I do love to talk, so.
I'm just curious, would it make more sense for each board member that attends to just do their own report? That way it's clear who the voice is?
It could. I don't find fault with that. More paperwork. I'm just trying to take the burden off of especially a lot of you that have other engagements in the mornings and stuff like that, so. But I'm perfectly happy if everybody wants to submit their own report.
Could you make it just optional even? That you will be expected, I guess, to make the report, but if anyone else would like to submit? Maybe?
I'm fine with that. I do ask, though, please, that if you don't submit a report, that you do just give me a, you know, a sentence or two or three of what, you know, what the issues were, the concerns of the praise, you know, what's going great in our schools, et cetera, et cetera. And that way I can include that in my report. Okay? Great. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Since some of you may not be able to attend school visitations due to work commitments, a list of school evening events has been compiled for your consideration. That was in your report packet. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to change the first board retreat date from October 28, 2017, to November 4, 2017, and approve Carl Kristoff as the facilitator and authorize the payment of his fee in the amount of $1,500? Mr. Mecca, second. Mrs. Beeger, discussion? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the following four board members to attend meetings with the superintendent, board, and members of the WTA Executive Committee? Sean Lemay, the board vice president; Teresa Leatherboro, the board vice president; Tony Vasquez, the board member with the most seniority; and Dr. Susan McClary, one of the newer Dr. Vannader, a second. Mrs. Beeger, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Board Attorney. There was discussion to open up a request for proposals for all the board and the district attorneys for the upcoming year. Is there any further discussion on this topic? If not, we can leave it and ask Mr. Matursky to issue an RFP this winter for review at a later time. Yes, Mrs. Leatherboro?
I just have a question because I just wasn't here and I don't know. When was the last time an RFP was done for board attorneys?
The spring of 2016.
And is that something that's typically done every couple of years?
Typically done approximately every five years.
Every five years? Okay.
So that was just done this past year? No, two years ago. Okay. Does the board still wish to request an RFP for this coming winter? Yes? I'm seeing a bunch of nods. Okay.
All right. Discussion.
Nothing we have to do. All right. Okay. Superintendent's Report: The Community Update. Dr. Martzloff, would you like to give us a community update, please?
Just real briefly, I already mentioned summer school graduation. Summer school has been proceeding along nicely this year with our elementary, middle, and high school students. We also have a number of programs going on throughout the district as well as some of our schools that are closed due to Capitol project construction. Our athletic field construction is going along very well, and we expect to have our grand opening ceremonies this coming September. It looks like right now South High School will have their grand opening in the evening of September 15, which I believe is Friday. And we're looking at the, I don't want to say the possible date yet for East, but perhaps it might be one week later to have the grand opening for the East Fields. And we are also very busy preparing for the start of the new school year with a number of meetings. You mentioned earlier, Mr. Lemay, New Teacher Orientation. We've hired dozens of new teachers, and we look forward to welcoming them and orienting them to our district. And as well as we have a number of administrative meetings that are taking place and leading up to opening day when all of our teachers and staff members return for business. So that concludes my community update.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to adapt the 2017-2018 annual agenda as presented? Mrs. Beeger, a second. Dr. McClary, any discussion? Mrs. Leatherboro?
One thing I noticed is this past year when we approved the Code of Conduct, I believe there was some board discussion about asking for a presentation regarding student discipline data. And I didn't know as a board if we wanted to ask that that be requested during a certain month.
Dr. Martzloff?
You can certainly do that. We don't mind adding any reports to the annual agenda. I would just want to make sure we do it in a month that makes sense, not to have too many presentations going on in any one board meeting, but also so that we can gather the data that we're going to need to make the report, which is of critical importance. So Dr. Siri, anything to add to that?
Really depends on what the board is looking for, but if you're looking for discipline data for the coming up school year, the 2017-18 school year, probably going to want to do it later in the school year rather than earlier. So that'll give us some indication of capturing most of the school year rather than a portion of it. But again, it's really the purpose or the intention for the board with what you're hoping to gather.
Mrs. Leatherboro, would you want that data in the beginning of the academic calendar year for the prior year or at the end of the academic calendar year for that present year?
I think what Dr. Siri is saying is that it would make sense for it to be later in the year so that we would see a glimpse of how the year is looking because our role as a board is to approve the Code of Conduct, and I want to be sure that I'm approving a Code of Conduct that is working and that we have data to support that it's working. And the only data I think that would be relevant then would be the disciplinary data.
Dr. Siri, is it possible to do a report based on the 16-17 school year data sometime during this coming up school year?
I'm not sure. I would need to research that because we, the way we collect the information, we potentially could provide data relative to VADA reporting, that type of thing, because that data does exist. But in terms of a discipline report, again, needing to know what from the board, what data elements you're looking for. I think we have a general sense and have started sketching some things out. I've already met with Ms. Raddus and our programmers to really look at how we can produce a valuable and meaningful report for the board. We actually started on that right after our board meeting when the discussion occurred. So I think we're positioned in a good way to present some meaningful data to you, and that's what made me think about either the spring or, as Mr. Lemay suggested, end of the calendar year for. end of the calendar year for, see how the whole year went to prepare you for the next school year, and then you would start having trend data.
Makes sense to me, because it's my understanding the code of conduct hasn't really changed that much in the past few years, if at all that I know of. So I don't know that it would matter so much which year disciplinary data we received. The reason why I ask is I know that many neighboring school districts are starting to look at adapting their code of conduct to include more restorative justice practices and culturally proficient consequences and things like that, so that it's not oppressive. So that's why I would be interested in that data. And I think at a time that you feel is most appropriate would make sense.
And we've actually had some conversations along those lines within the district, and in fact did add a statement to our last code of conduct, you may recall, regarding more restorative practices and those considerations as we're looking at discipline, because again, it's to be instructive. There should be an educative component to help alter behavior and help students make good decisions, so.
I would echo the desire to obtain that data, in that I also think it would be helpful for some other potential board goals, when you consider reducing bullying in elementary schools potentially, and/or reducing drug use in high schools. Disciplinary action could be a very helpful metrics to take a look at, both pre and post, any changes we may institute.
So is it safe to say we'll leave it in Dr. Siri's hands, and if you have questions regarding some of that data, you can bring it back to the boards? Okay. Same with timeline? Acceptable to leave it to them to best decide it? Is that okay with you? Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
You have anything else to add to this information given to the board, Dr. Marslov?
I do not.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. "Would someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint the Dignity for All Students Act, District of Building Coordinators as presented?" Mrs. Van Seis, second. Mr. Mecha, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 701. Class rank, "Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to eliminate the use of the class rank, beginning with students entering grades nine in September 2017?" Mrs. Beeger, second. Mr. Meyer, discussion?
I would like to discuss this. As stated before, I am absolutely in favor, after I saw the presentation, went out and talked to students, as well as many parents. My biggest concern at this point is the timeline of it. I really feel that the implementation for incoming September 2017 students is way, is just way too far off with a three-year. I actually spoke to several parents, one that spoke outright and begged me. Her son will be a senior, she actually had an idea. He is trying to get into UCLA. His average is wonderful, it's high credentials, top 10%. He realized at this point, he most likely is not going to fall in the top 10% because his average is within a thousandth from, you know, number 10 compared to where he's going to be. Therefore, he potentially will not be able to get into the college of his choice because of this. Without the class rank, he most likely will be able to get in. One of her options, which I said I would bring to the table, is could we potentially, if we can get this, she of course would like it done now, and I've talked to several parents that were pleading, could it ever be an optional for maybe a year or two for those students that are going to be seniors or juniors, where they can have the choice to either include class rank or not include it on their transcript before we completely eliminate it altogether? But what I would like to speak of is I would like to see us implement this a lot sooner. We know that the survey took place. The high school students are the one that spoke loudly. I don't feel we should start with the upcoming ninth graders. I think we need to do it now for those students that are currently in high school.
Further discussion?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. So at this point, I'm not 100% in favor of abolishing class rank. I still don't feel like I fully have my head wrapped around the appropriate pros and cons in my mind. I certainly did review the survey information. I do some questions in terms of the metrics. It did seem like we were heavily skewed towards parent input and student input. I believe we only had 35 teachers, perhaps, surveyed, which seems to me to be a bit odd. I'm sure if I surveyed my high school student, he might very well survey himself not to attend school next year if he had the voting rights. So I fully recognize the arguments for abolishing rank in terms of minimizing stress, et cetera. What I guess I wrestle with, too, though, is we do live in a performance-based world, and these students will be graduating high school and take on jobs in which their promotions, their livelihoods, their promotions, their income will be based on performance-based metrics. I also think, having looked at many of the universities out there, there is a mixture. You know, there are some Ivy Leagues out there that are moving away from class rank. I spoke to one today to find out what their stance was from an admissions standpoint. I'd like to make sure that as a board, we've done the due diligence to make sure that from a SUNY standpoint, where I think a very large percentage of our students do matriculate to after high school, that all SUNY schools are in favor of this. I also think it's important to make sure that the community fully recognizes the ramifications if you remove student rank on the algorithm that affects their students being accepted into university. So if you're anti-SAT and other testing methods, and you don't have student rank, what might that do to your son or your daughter's application and evaluation at select schools? So I guess I'll ask one question. Do we know for sure, based on the due diligence done by the district, that from a SUNY school standpoint, where many of our students do attend after graduation, that this will not negatively affect them in any way, shape, or form? Do we have an answer to that? A definitive yes? It is okay, and all SUNY schools will not use this, or will not radically change how they're evaluated?
Dr. Marslov, could you answer that, and maybe also address some of his other concerns?
Yeah, I think what we saw in the presentation was the fact that fewer and fewer schools across the country are utilizing class rank when making admissions decisions. Does that mean that there are no schools that use class rank anymore? No, it doesn't. As a matter of fact, some districts have get rid of class rank. This is probably a larger question we need to address. What are you going to replace it with? Are you gonna go to a decile system? Are you gonna go to some other type of unpublished rank? Because there will be times when somebody asks, "What's the rank? What would be the rank if you did do ranking at your school?" Those sort of questions may be asked by admissions officers. They may be asked by individuals who are determining scholarships. Whether or not I can say definitively that all SUNY schools would agree that it would not adversely affect our students, I don't think I can say that definitively, but I would say that the trend, both within New York State and nationally, is moving away from class rank. It is more about what type of an academic program have you taken? Have you challenged yourself with all the most demanding courses that your high school offers? What is your high school profile? What does that look like? You mentioned SAT, ACT. Very difficult to get into universities these days without a strong score on at least one of those tests. So all these things come into play when determining whether or not a student gains acceptance into college. So I think, you know, going back to the presentation that was done in June by Dr. Siri and Dr. Baylen and some other folks, it seemed to really point to the amount of stress that children perceive from this, stress that parents perceive, the fact that, as Mrs. Van Seis said earlier this evening, you can have a ninth-ranked student who's only a hundredth, or a thousandth of a point off from someone who's ranked 21st, or something much lower. So when you're splitting hairs to that degree, it does open the idea or the conversation up for what are students trying to do to glean or gain any type of advantage in their own class rank, which really isn't the purpose either. So looking at it holistically, that's why we've come to this conclusion, but to answer your question, Dr. Venater, I don't think I can say that every SUNY school would 100% agree that there'd be no negative view of Williamsville students because there's no class rank.
And, you know, I'll just build off, I think those were some very insightful remarks, Dr. Marslov. You know, the question of what will replace it, I think we do need to be considerate of that. So if you remove class rank, and I apologize if I've missed some information, but are we replacing that with a GPA that's only known to admissions counselors so that there's some frame of reference? Many of them can back into GPAs, as I've been told in speaking with some universities, or do we provide a scattergram of all the grades in a class size? I mean, there are a lot of different potential solutions, I've been told by admissions counselors. I just want to make sure we think those through so we fully understand and done our due diligence, that if we do abolish class rank, we are providing additional appropriate information as a frame of reference to those admissions counselors.
Dr. Siri, I know you spoke to some individuals outside of Erie County who, in their school districts, have eliminated class rank and got some feedback from them, and wondered if you wouldn't mind sharing some of that with the board, so that they can hear what some of our colleagues across New York State have said about it, and what some of their next steps may have been.
I was actually able to connect with one individual, Dr. Marslov, not a couple, and I will share with you that this particular district has not used class rank for quite some time. He indicated to me there was no negative fallout for the students when they eliminated class rank. Basically, what they do with regard to scholarships, I had asked that on occasion, there might be scholarship applications that require some of that information, class rank information. He indicated that if that occurs, what they will do is they'll share that information, they kind of calculate a class rank sort of behind the scenes, like a scattergram, or being able to give that information directly with the scholarship application system, but they do not share it directly with colleges or students. So it's to facilitate the students' application and the scholarship for a scholarship if that's required. No known negative impact on the awarding of scholarships, so none of that had been reported, because I asked that question specifically as well. This particular individual really felt that the result has been fostering a more collaborative learning environment, and no longer that strong element of the types of kind of competition that Dr. Marslov referred to. I asked about valedictorian and salutatorian, because I'm very often asked that question, Dr. Baylen and I are, and they indicated that to choose a speaker for graduation, they follow the following process. They look across seven semesters for the GPA, of the student's GPA, including current course performance. The students must have a 90 or above average for each of the semesters and the current semester, and they name these students honor grads, and they present them with an honor cord. The group, the group of students then that are considered honor grads, then votes as who they would like to represent them as a speaker at the graduation. The senior class president also speaks at the graduation ceremony, and this individual also indicated to me that the structure forces colleges to do their work. In other words, to look at the complete picture of the student and the entire child, or the whole child. So that was the information that was shared. We've had some conversations amongst ourselves in terms of selection of speakers at graduation, and there have been a variety of ideas that have been tossed around that we would want to further examine or develop with our different high schools. That's the information I can share back.
Thank you.
And, Dr. Venater, let me add just three things here that I pulled up the presentation from June that might also help answer some of your questions here. I'm quoting from the presentation. "The percentages of colleges that rated class rank as considerably important plummeted from 42% in 1993 to 13% in 2012. Almost 60% of high schools across America do not rank their students, and as reported by colleges, when class rank is not provided, the breadth and depth of the academic programming, along with the holistic review of consideration for the admission process." So it really seems like the emphasis on class rank is kind of out the door.
And I agree with that, and I can appreciate the trends, and I respect when I jump online and I see Dartmouth and Yale and some other schools moving in that direction. I think the, there's something about some of the discussion around students who are feeling overwhelmed and stressed. I just want to make sure we're not remiss in recognizing that our job is to educate them to be professionals in an environment that is metric-based and professionally graded. I don't think we're probably gonna say, well, we're gonna hold off on professional ratings and metrics for administrators, or teachers, because that will stress them out. So I feel, right, I mean, or hate LeBron James, you're making 50 million this year, but you only scored 20 points on average last year, so we're still gonna pay you the same amount. I think we just need to recognize, and so while I'm being a little tongue-in-cheek, I do think we have to recognize that while I think our intentions are good, and we do want to alleviate unneeded stress, we do need to make sure that we're putting them in a professional development environment that is gonna make sure that they're prepared. Because I can tell you that if you want a residency in human medicine, or veterinary medicine, or in dental medicine, they're going to look at your GPA, they're going to look at your publications, they're going to look at metrics, and we need to make sure that we're not taking it too easy, perhaps, or putting them in an artificial environment. And that's the only reason why I hear a lot of the energy around that. I just want to make sure that we are doing our best to make sure that we're preparing them for ultimately their career and their environment moving forward.
Fair points. Mrs. Beeger?
My thoughts on that, about making it too easy for them, it's interesting, because in our district in Williamsville, we're lucky that our kids have so many opportunities, and we're also, we've seen in presentations, and we know from publications, that this is a very high-performing district. So while our kids still are held to standards, they're still graded, we're not, you know, shifting to narrative-based system versus grade, so that we'll still have that. College applications, they'll still be looking for different activities that they've done, and clubs and things like that. What's interesting about in a district such as ours, when you have a high-performing district, we have so many students that have a GPA or a grade average that is so high, it's almost hurting them to be in a high-performing district, because for the child that's applying to go to Yale, if they were in a different district where the kids weren't performing as high and their class rank was higher and they had the same grades, would they get in? But they wouldn't, because they're in Williamsville. And I think when we're making decisions for the best interest of our kids, we want our kids to go and be successful and be part of the program that they deserve to be in. But if the kid at rank nine and rank 21 are a thousandth of a point, and they're all really good candidates, and that rank is the one thing holding them back when they have all these other credentials, I personally look at this in the presentation and the feedback we've gotten from the community and think that we're not making it easier for them, we're just making it fair. It's almost like giving level playground, and they're still, you know, able to apply, but that we're not giving them a setback by giving them that rank, because so many of our students are high performers.
And I think that's actually an excellent point, and I would agree with you. We certainly don't want to be holding them back. I guess my question would be if many schools are moving away from putting as heavy an emphasis on that, to what extent is it really holding them back? I mean, and if GPA, or sorry, class rank is being weighed more moderately, is it a terrible thing to continue GPA if that's becoming less in the equation?
Well, if you go to college board, which I did sit down already with an actual advisor, who went through and was showing you can get on college board and you can pull up any school you want, they give you the three criteria that you need to get into that school. Example, UCLA, top, or class rank is one of the three. Then it will tell you, if you don't have those three things, or one of those three things, what else are they going to look at? So class rank, the way I look at it is, class rank right now in Williamsville is becoming a hindrance to a child's adm- a hindrance to a child's admission, and it shouldn't be that way. So college and universities realize that class rank might not be, that's one if UCLA wants class rank. If you don't have it though, they show you, okay, here's our secondary, if you don't have this, this is what we're going to look at, which I think was personal expression. You know, so there's criteria and college board is beautiful, it's a wonderful website that you can see all the colleges. So you understand then that you're not being punished for not having class rank, it's just that's not the option, so they're going to use another option, which I think will be to, in favor and definitely a positive move for our students in Williamsville.
Mr. Meckler?
I'd just like to thank everybody for this great conversation. It's got my head spinning back and forth in a thousand different directions, and I think everybody has really valid points that they brought up. Dr. Venator's point about SUNY though, I think is really valid because I think the smaller, more competitive schools have done away with the need for class rank, but I think larger schools are going to be weeding out a larger number of candidates. I think that class rank still is a, a pretty important factor for them. But Ms. Van Seis, I thought your comment was really great, that in some respects, having class rank really doesn't give a great picture of our students where we have so many talented students. So somebody that's number 57 or something in their class who still in all, all rights as a superstar is not going to show up as a superstar because they're number 57. So I think that's a good point, too. I really am not sure where I stand on this issue myself at the moment, but I think the conversation's been really great. And I think though, SUNY though, that's, you're right to pick that out as a concern.
And Mrs. Leatherboro?
I just don't want the elimination of class rank to be mixed up with us in some way not having high expectations or rigor. I have two students, well, come fall, I have two students, two children in high school, and there's many nights where my work is completed and I'm on the couch, and they're up in their rooms for hours completing assignments. So I do believe heavily that we are in a very rigorous district. I also, with children in high school, really want for them to experience everything that they can possibly experience in terms of courses. Once they start paying for those classes at the college level, it's going to be very scripted in terms of the direction of their choices. And sometimes if they even choose an elective, it might cost them having to pay later down the road in summer school or perhaps go on to a fifth year in order to complete their bachelor's. At high school, it's about the exploration, and I've encouraged both of my high school students to think about their future career and lean towards courses in those avenues, but to remain open-minded and to take things that maybe are a little out of their comfort zone. And what better place to do that than here in Williamsville? I very much do support this proposal for class rank. I was on the fence regarding what Ms. Van Seis had said about with the timeline, but I have to look at it in terms of what feedback we've received from the community. We did have a community forum where we discussed it, and many excellent points were raised. We then had a presentation in June where many of the questions that arose from the forum were thoroughly vetted and answered. I also got to attend the PTSA council meeting, whether it was May or June, I don't recall, and the student representatives was very articulate in expressing what, what they wanted to see, and they definitely want to see it eliminated. If I, if there were parents coming these past few months speaking about wanting it sooner, then I would want to look towards that, but because we have not seen that nor have we received any communications or correspondences to the board, I'm comfortable with approving it as presented.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Dr. McClary?
I would just like to lobby for having it begin with incoming eighth graders, not incoming ninth graders. I know that it's something that needs to be explored, it's something that students and teachers and parents have to wrap their heads around, and I just feel that if you look at it as an eighth grader who isn't, well, advanced students would be taking some high school courses, but in general, they're kind of easing into this whole situation. I just think eighth grade would be better than ninth grade when they're already around a mindset of exactly what's going to happen. That's all.
So just for my edification, just so I'm, I'm clear, I appreciate the discussion, you guys have very valid points and I respect them. So do we know right now what will replace class rank if we abolish it? Are we sharing GPA with admissions counselors? Are we sharing a scattergram? Do we know before we abolish something what we're putting in its place? Because otherwise, it seems premature to me.
Dr. Siri, you had your hand up for a while, you want to make some comments? Feel free, and then I'll follow up.
I think Dr. Baylen and I would like to share the mic, if that's acceptable to the board, to just share a few things that were mentioned this evening. And I will turn it over to, to Dr. Baylen first, and then I will jump in on the last question.
To address some of the earlier points made with regard to admissions, there were actually interviews done by members of our group, including our guidance counselors of admissions, officers of the colleges and universities that happened to be the ones that our students most frequently have attended or have applied to. We've relied upon that because we wanted to explore the very nature of the questions that are being posed this evening, which would be if there, if rank is not available or not provided, what is the impact? Two very important points came out. One, and I think this was alluded to earlier by Mrs. Van Seis, without rank, other factors are examined. Those institutions did confirm that that is the case with them as well, because currently they are receiving students from other districts around New York State that don't currently use rank. So they have to find another way to evaluate the student's whole profile without the rank included. So we thought that point was important. And actually, the bullet on the slide that was mentioned earlier by Mr. Lemay, that was really the essence of capturing in one statement essentially in that presentation, a lot of work that was done by our members of our group, including the high school principals, counselors and others, to talk directly with those folks involved at the post-K-12 level to see exactly what they do use or would use in the event that rank isn't provided. And come to find out, it really did affirm that other factors are examined and that currently they're receiving students from a number of school districts that have either not used rank or abolished it.
The other piece we wanted to make sure the board was aware of is that as a result of our communications and conversations with colleges and universities around this topic, we also endeavored last year to make sure we updated our school profiles and had uniform school profiles. So all of the three high schools now have consistent school profiles and have very meaningful information articulated in those profiles, and those are now updated annually. So that gives good information to the colleges and universities as to what the comparative group is, what types of courses and other information that is valuable to them when they're considering accepting students into their program.
The only item I would mention is that I personally have been contacted by some colleagues in other districts who have heard about our conversations. They are having some new, some continued discussion around this topic as well, and they are really inquisitive about what brought us to where we are now in terms of our discussion, the information we collected and our processes, because I believe from what has been shared with me that there's interest in exploring this topic in other locations not too far away from here.
If I could just make a recommendation to the board, since there has been lengthy discussion on this item tonight and there seems to be some uncertainty, a recommendation might be that we table it for one more month and during that time for our media and communications to really hype this up and publicize it through Twitter, that it is something that we're planning on taking action upon soon. That way, we have more opportunity for input from anybody that wants to weigh in.
I think I heard from the table, correct me if I'm wrong, please add in if I missed something. What are, what would our plans be in terms of replacing class rank? What would that look like? I think that's a key question to answer for our community publicly. And then, secondly, other districts that have, have gotten rid of class rank, what's their experience been? Has it been uniformly positive? As Dr. Siri mentioned from the one district, are there other districts we could talk to about that? And then, any further research we could do regarding college acceptances from SUNY schools? I think, Dr. Venator, that was one of the areas you were thinking of. And then, am I missing anything else that the board would want information on in order to make an informed decision? Yes?
I think the other thing to consider, what Mrs. Van Seis alluded to, I'm also feeling the same way about having this be a decision for incoming freshmen versus students who are applying to colleges now, our, our current student body. We've surveyed our students that are in high school now, so for them to say, yes, we're in favor of removing it, but then it doesn't impact them, that doesn't, that doesn't sit right with me. So I think we've really surveyed and explored the idea of should we or should we not eliminate class rank, but perhaps there's a way to explore further whether this motion should read ninth grade or just current students.
I think the thinking from the district leadership team and the school counselors and principals would, what would be if we were going to eliminate class rank, the most fair way to enact that? And I think that's why it was, well, let's look at incoming ninth graders. You know, Dr. McClary mentioned, well, what about incoming eighth graders? That's another possibility. Mrs. Van Seis mentioned, what about for everybody, starting this September? That's another possibility. In looking at all those, there's a few pros and cons to each, but I think ultimately the board's going to need to decide what's going to be best for the students of the district at all three high schools in terms of the potential elimination for class rank. Is it incoming eighth, incoming ninth, incoming tenth? Everybody all at once graduated? There's different, different ideas there. So we're gonna, we'll look at that some more to see if there's any other information from our school counselors and our high school principals and come back to the board if the board should decide to table this for one more month and try to fill in any gaps in, in people's thinking so that we can make an informed, rational choice.
Let me add a specific to that. Mrs. Bieger and I, myself here, we're doing some quick Google searches on SUNY school systems, and it seems the SUNY school system leaves it up to the individual schools. Most seem to have recommended it. However, we did find the SUNY college at Brockport that does specifically require it at class rank. So I'd be curious as to, let's, let's put a college or, excuse me, a university under the gun here, and let's see what they do specifically to alleviate class rank if we can. And my second point, and which is more of a question to Dr. Martzloff, if we table this, what effect does this have if we do pass this motion next month on the incoming class of, what is the incoming class, 2022 now?
2021.
2021? So this is the freshman coming in, is this policy still going to go into effect for them? Or because the academic school year has started, are we now going to delay that one whole year?
No, it's up to the board, but I wouldn't see a couple weeks of time in ninth grade as being a deterrent to making a decision on their, whether or not they have rank as part of their calculation.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? All right, then I'd like to make a motion to table this. I have somebody, everybody, Mrs. Leatherboro? Thank you. All in favor of the table?
Thank you. All right. I mean, you're right.
Abstentions? This motion is tabled unanimously. We will come back to this next month with those answers. Okay. Revised policy 7521. Would someone like to motion to take the revised policy 7521 from the table, please? Dr. McClary, second. Mrs. Van Seis, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to move a second reading and adoption of the revised policy 7521? Isn't that what we just?
Now we're...
Yep, I think that's in error.
Nope. Now it's, I took it from the table.
Oh, I'm, yeah, thank you for the clarification. Like to move a second reading and adoption of the revised policy 7521. Mrs. Bieger, second. Mrs. Leatherboro, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, 700. Policy 1340, Board Staff Communications. Under Committee of the Whole, at the July 5, 2017 Organization Meeting of the Board, Mrs. Leatherboro asked that revisions be made to policy 1340, Board Staff Communications. By consensus, the Board has agreed that Mrs. Leatherboro could make suggestions for revisions at the August Board meeting. Mrs. Leatherboro, would you like to present your suggestions for changes for the Board Discussion, please?
Sure. I'd like to offer a suggested revision, and I believe it's up on the screen. If we could scroll down, the only changes I'm proposing is to the final paragraph. And that's perfect, because there you can see how it was previously, and basically what I'm proposing that we change is that third line down, all policies and directives of staff interest and concern will be communicated to staff members through the superintendent, I'm adding, and his or her cabinet. And then the final sentence I'm changing, there should be a period after cabinet, I, that was a typo for me, I apologize. So we would put a period after the word cabinet, and then it would read, however, staff and board members are encouraged to communicate freely in order to promote a healthy climate for teaching and learning.
I guess, I guess I'm kind of reading the last sentence as being contradictory to the sentence I just read. So I don't know, maybe others are reading it differently, but I feel like maybe we're giving them a conflicting direct, policy or directive here.
Can I answer to that? My thinking with that was, in the sentence before, we're referring to policies and directives. And so policies and directives should come from our superintendent or his or her designees. However, we want to encourage communication between staff and the board, therefore, we have that freedom to communicate freely, we just wouldn't give each other directives.
So are you saying it should apply to everything other than policies and directives? The open communication?
I believe that's the way it's worded. Can you think of a reason why that would not be appropriate?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying whether it's appropriate or not, I'm just, in terms of how I'm, how I'm reading it. I guess if that's the intent, I would just specify, staff and board members, for everything other than policy and directives, are encouraged to communicate.
And initially, this was going to be a first reading, it was changed to a discussion. And I think a reason for that is that this policy is about board and staff communications. So therefore, it shouldn't come just from one individual board member, but what I would like to see with this as, is this as a recommendation or a draft, and then have the superintendent take it back to the leadership team, who then take it back to their union heads to get their input as well. There is a paragraph up above where it says, the superintendent of school shall develop methods to keep staff fully informed of the board's problems, concerns, actions, and for staff to communicate information related to district operations. I think that that... I think that that's important for all staff to then also be involved in the creation of this policy, since it's what it's regarding.
And I, I agree with that. I, I'm not finding such a problem with it, because the things that I like, first of all, it is a board-staff communication policy. So it makes sense that we would want communication. I believe it's important that we are saying that first and foremost, you need to follow the chain of command. We, everyone, I think, knows in the district what the chain of command is, and we expect them to go through those avenues first and foremost. But just like the community, we also know that there are times that staff does reach out to us, and our duty is to listen and to come back, as long as we are sharing it then, with the board and the superintendent. So I believe it's appropriate, especially if we are putting an emphasis on school visitation. Why would we have school visitations where we're inviting the board and expected really to attend and to welcome communication if we don't have a policy that's supporting it? So it's, I don't think it's meant for anything other than, you know, we're working together as a whole and we're here. You know, I don't think it reads that we want them to come to us for the complaint or anything like that. They need to follow the chain of command, but they certainly can communicate with us. I, I just thought of like a school board visitation, where it should be, it should be open if we're attending. And it was the last time I went to a school board visitation. I want people to be, to know that they're allowed to come up to me, introduce themselves, and just chat with me without, I guess, being in trouble.
Mrs. Beeger?
And to add to that, that's where my mind went as well. The problem that I have with the current policy is that the last line says, "This will not be construed as denying the right of any staff member to appeal any action or decision of the superintendent to the board." And that reads kind of negatively to me, because that makes me think, well, if you have a problem or you want to appeal an action or a decision of the superintendent, then you can talk to the board. I think it's much more positive and open, especially here, it says, "We want to achieve good board-staff relations. We need to maintain this in a climate of mutual trust and respect." So rather than saying, you know, we're not taking away the right of you to appeal an action of the superintendent, rather just to say, "Encourage to communicate freely in order to promote the healthy climate for teaching and learning." I do like that. And I also do like the addition of following the chain of command is appropriate. And this little brochure that was made this year, they really clearly lay that out, teacher, principal, supervisor, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and I think that that's an important addition there as well.
Mr. Maka?
So given what you just said, can I make the suggestion that we keep the wording, "However, this will not be construed as denying the right of any staff member," and then continue on to communicate freely in order to promote a healthy climate for teaching and learning?
Are you asking to have the wording be, "However, this will not be construed as denying the right of any staff member to appeal any action or decision," there only is an appeal?
I guess I was trying to amalgamate the two ideas. So I agree with the negative sentiment that's contained in the original wording. So I was kinda trying to take some of the original wording that made sense and bring it together with some of the wording that was in the revision that made sense as well. I'm just throwing it out there, I figure somebody will bounce off that and we'll finally come up with something that really, you know, works for all of us.
Well, let me throw this out there as well, to kinda inject here. I did reach out to the board's attorney and asked for his, his thought process on this, from both his opinion and from a legal point of view. His takeaway was a couple things. He believed it was important that the superintendent says one message that reflects what the Board of Eds is representing, and that it's very important that we consider bombardment of information and communication going in both ways. He made a suggestion that communication should be through the board president and vice president. And then asked him if he was to rewrite this paragraph, how would he rewrite it? So I'm gonna read you what his response is. And again, this would be replacing even the existing proposed paragraph. "All communications and reports to the board from staff members and staff organizations will be submitted to the board through the superintendent, except in limited circumstances noted below. All official communications, policies, and directives the staff should be communicated through the superintendent. However, nothing herein shall be construed as denying the right of any staff member to appeal any action or decision of the superintendent of the board. In addition, a staff member may communicate on matters of district concern with the board president and/or board vice president in instances where the board president and/or vice president determines that such method of communication is appropriate." Now, that's a lot of, that's a lot. I'm not quite sure that we wanna go that direction with this last paragraph. So, last week at the law conference, I reached out to Jane with the Erie County Association of School Boards, who then pushed me in the direction of BOSI's. I happened to be sitting in the BOSI's policymaking class, so I asked the instructor at the end of the class for her advice, if I could reach out to her. Via email, I reached out to her. She then in turn handed it off to the district's representative that represents the district here, works for the district on policy writing. And I don't mean to sound like I'm giving you a long story. Long story short, though, after about four or five days, I kinda got the little runaround, and I got denied with any help, mainly because it was not coming through the appropriate channels, which is the policymaking group, which is made up of Dr. Martzloff, Dr. Siri, and the district clerk, Mrs. Seraphin. So I was not able to get anything on that front. I understand where the board attorney is coming from. He's looking at trying to protect both ways, bombardment of, say, the assistant superintendents from board members. Not to say that we have any rogue board members on the, on the board at this point, but I think he's trying to encourage us to realize that a policy becomes basically the law, and this is the law for the next five years, 10 years, until this policy is overturned again. So he's trying to caution us to make sure that we're keeping that fact in mind, that while we have nine great board members this year, that may not always be the case. And of course, trying to not bombard the board members from, say, staff members. I know we are addressing it in this paragraph here, and trying to promote the chain of command. But I guess to bombard, you know, staff members could bombard board members for various reasons not followed in this policy. So not giving an opinion either way on that, I'm just kinda presenting that, to kind of inject it here for discussion. Dr. McClary?
I'm just thinking that perhaps, you look, the first word is communications, and then we're hung up from at the very end where it says to communicate freely. So you've got yes, communications, and not communicate. So if perhaps either the word communications is changed or the word communicate is changed, then I think grammatically or whatever, it would then show that subtle, I don't know if you wanna be subtle, but shows the difference, that you're saying communications need to follow the chain of command, but there may be some situations where it would be appropriate to discuss, to bring up, to suggest, to request, to some other verb other than communicate.
Converse?
I don't know if that solves it.
Converse? I don't know if that's too broad, but.
I don't know if that.
Encourage to converse freely?
Mine?
Yeah, I think you need to be explicit when you're giving people policy so that no one gets confused. Everyone should understand what the policy is. And I forget who you said drafted the, the, the policy redraft that you read out aloud, but. Yeah, it was, it was very wordy, but I thought it was very explicit. And I could, I followed it along pretty, pretty well, actually.
Cause you're a lawyer.
Oh, okay, touche, touche. But it basically said that everything gets filtered through the superintendent, and then it gave a very clear exception as a way to communicate directly to the board through, basically, the board's president, which I think is, is fair. And in truth, I think we're dealing with formal communication, not an informal, hey, how are ya? I just ran into you on the hall, by the way, this was what's going on. I don't think that, that applies to this policy, but you're dealing with formal communications. I like the way that, that read.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
Two points. First, regarding Mr. Switek's suggestion. As much as I appreciate being board vice president, and I'm thankful for that honor, I don't feel that I, myself, or the president should have any additional authority in terms of staff members only being able to speak to an officer. My second point is, last year we approved a board goal, and we may choose to approve a similar goal this year. And I believe it was our first goal, right at the top there, that promotes two-way communication in an effort to foster relationships. If that is our, one of our top goals, how do we do that with a policy then that says a little bit of the contrary?
I, I think the answer is you can't. In my view, anyway.
Mrs. Beeger?
The comment you made about formal versus informal may be getting us a little closer as well, because when you talk about this formal communication, that's where you follow the chain of command. At the same time, if we're in a board visitation or a function and you see a member of the community who's also a teacher, is there this weird stigma where now you're a board member and they're a staff member, and we cannot communicate unless we follow protocol? Or are we encouraged to communicate freely in a way that, you know, we're promoting this healthy climate? So maybe going forward, before we get to a reading of this, we wanna think about those words of formal versus informal. I also think we should not make this too complicated. More, like, sometimes less is more, for me. So I think if we're making this a big, long thing about certain people and this and that, for me, it was just the spirit of, what it says now is, you go to a board member only if you need to appeal an action or a decision, whereas we're representing our, you know, the entire community. Teachers, staff members, administrators are part of that. Why wouldn't we communicate freely?
Can I make a suggestion? Dr. McClary, I'm thinking about your recommendation. What if we took the first communications in that last paragraph and changed that to correspondences or correspondence?
Correspond freely?
Correspond, no, in the beginning.
First one.
Oh, sorry.
Because that replies, to me, correspondence replies more of a formal letter.
Say, formal correspondence?
We could say formal correspondence and reports, or we could say correspondence.
Correspondence, I think, implies?
Implies formality?
Yeah.
I thought so, too.
Yes.
Just a quick question that I'm gonna throw out there. If we were to have open communication, which I think is a great goal, but is that in conflict now with our other policy of having our president be the mouthpiece for the board? We're always talking about restraining ourselves and filtering through our president.
Action with the public?
Believe that the authority of the president is only in relation to the media. You're a board spokesperson, which is different than just having a conversation.
I think you're correct.
Yeah, I believe it's just media.
Dr. Banana, did you have a comment?
I, I like the clarity here. I mean, I think the spirit that we're all looking for is, you know, we're in a public education system, we were voted in by the public. We want transparent communication. That's certainly something that I hear echoed a lot through the community. And they like to feel that we're approachable. So I, I like where we're moving with this, because the goal here is for all nine of us, as we're in the community, to be filters for information and to share that with other board members effectively. And I think that's what the community is looking for. So I like the direction we're moving here.
I will kinda give you guys a little background. Typically, policy is, my understanding, it's a, it's a, like a five, six, seven-month process. Typically, there's a committee that goes and discusses all of what we're discussing, then brings it up to an action item. I think it's reviewed by, if I'm not mistaken, the assistant superintendents and superintendent, and then it's eventually brought forth to the table for us for a reading. We're kinda circumventing this process because we want this policy done sooner. And I definitely respect and agree with that. We'd like to see this policy changed much sooner than that. I know comment has been mentioned by Mrs. Leatherbarrow here that we'd like to still get the input of other parties that are affected by this. So we've kind of tinkered with this a little bit. We've also made some notes as to what we wanna make sure that's in this policy. Would it be fair if, within timelines, if we can suggest that maybe before the next board meeting, other entities are polled on this somehow? And I'm open to suggestions and ideas. I know, you know, I'd be curious as to what policies could come together with something like this. And of course, as I said, there, we have to go through the proper channels to get that information. But I am definitely curious as to how, say, the WAA, the WTA, the assistant superintendents, and other bodies that are affected by this policy, what they think of it, and if they have suggestions. Since, I mean, we're on public record here as to what we're trying to achieve with this goal, is we're trying to meet a goal that we set a year ago of open and transparency and two-way communication with the board. And this policy is, seems to be, you know, holding us back. So I think the notes are there, so to speak, as to what we're looking for, and maybe we can try and get some feedback?
I'm in agreement with that. I'd really like to see us be able to do a first reading by next month. I hear what you're saying regarding past practices, but I just wanna also remind us that the state hasn't trusted the board to have the authority to set policy.
Correct.
You know, I'm, I'm just thinking again, but in terms of I'm reading it, first sentence, correspondence and reports to the board. That could be construed as the entirety of this board, as opposed to a board member. So any kind of official, let's say, letters and reports to the board on an issue, maybe you keep, keep it that way, where it gets directed through the superintendent, and then you can write it so that staff members are encouraged to communicate with individual board members freely. So I'm just throwing stuff out there. I'm not saying whether I'm in favor of one or the other, I'm just thinking.
I like the, I like the idea of going forward before we kind of nitpick and put in our final touches, which I think we should do when, when we get to the reading. It says right in the policy, "Staff participation and development of educational and personnel policies will be encouraged and facilitated." So can we possibly facilitate that happening in the next month? Perhaps, Dr. Martzloff, if you and your team, perhaps maybe some leaders in WAA and WTA kind of look it over, and whether they like the old policy or have thoughts towards our, I guess, our attempt to make that communication more transparent and approachable and positive, too. I mean, there's so much concern and things like that. And we also wanna be encouraging positive conversation. And I think the spirit of that should be in this policy as well. Would it be a possibility to, maybe in the next month, before we look at it, get some feedback from?
I know you have a lot of things in the next 30 days to accomplish with the start of the year, but anything that could make this a priority would be forever in your debt?
I think the leadership team, we'd be happy to review it and vet it with other constituencies within our district. I think at the end of the day, you do need a legal review, because it needs to be, it needs to pass legal muster. You don't want a policy that isn't supported by the law, isn't supported what's in, for example, bargaining unit contracts, what's, and all these different things. So that's an important piece before doing the first reading that I think you wanna. It doesn't have to be the first draft of what was, was shared by Mr. Lemay, but there does have to be some type of vetting process with, with legal counsel. And I get a sense from the board members who spoke this evening, sort of what you're looking for. I think that the real challenge is how do you balance that? You know, how do you have a chain of command that's respected, but yet at the same time have, you know, a situation where people are encouraged to communicate freely? It seems like a, a sort of a contradiction almost. So we'll look at it, we'll work on it, and we'll come back to the board with some thoughts as soon as we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, we're gonna, would someone like to make a motion to approve the super eval module for this year's superintendent's evaluation, and prove the payment of $1,950 to the contract of service? of service? Mrs. Beeger, second? Dr. Banater? Any discussion? Mrs. Beeger?
I had read that this program can be possibly adable by BOCs if this motion is carried tonight. Can we look into that as an option to help cover the cost of this program or parts of it?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think that's a problem at all.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I see Mr. Hartz is in the audience.
I asked Mr. Hart, yes.
Up to the podium, Mr. Hartz?
Let me start by saying thank you for coming this evening and waiting patiently for us.
Well, thank you for having me. Yes, good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Hartz, I'm vice president of Strategic Relationships for PLS Third Learning. We're a company that spun out of University of Buffalo. We have offices right downtown. It was three guys and a dream that jumped out of UB, and now we're up to over 45 full time. And, you know, we, we're thrilled to have the Williamsville District onboard, you know, not only because you're a Western New York district, but one of the highest performing districts in all of New York State. So it'll be great to work with Dr. Martzloff and all of you. I noticed there's some familiar faces in the crowd. Dr. Baylen, good to see you. I was here just to answer any questions that you might have. We do, it is BOCs adable, so, and that's just, you know, formality, contract-wise, so that's no problem. But, and any other questions at all with regards to...
Answer a question for me, if you could, for the board. What kind of training or education is given once the contract is signed on this?
Yeah, there's a couple of different trainings actually through BOCs that we developed for BOCs so they can turnkey. One is basically the utility of the tool. How does it work? Really, like a one-hour workshop. There's a, and then we have two board workshops that gets into the actual practices of evaluating, you know, superintendent, best practices in evaluations. There's a 90-minute session that we, that we can, drew up as well as a three-hour session. So, and that are services that BOCs can offer. So...
Other questions? How long has this system been around for?
This, we're going into our second full year. So two years ago, we did a pilot program with a number of districts across New York State. Last year, we had up to 80 districts get onboard across New York State. So if you, it's pretty good in one year, we think. And then we have probably a pipeline of 120 just here in New York State that are interested. And then, you know, who knows, as we collect testimonials and whatnot. You know, I will say that the system itself, I mean, yes, it's online, it's easy to use, it streamlines the process. The person collecting the data, you know, all of the data collected in the comments with the click of a button, but it's the, it's the deep and rich conversations that this process and tool, you know, gets to is really what superintendents and board, board presidents and boards speak to. So it's really been a home run for us. We're looking to go into Pennsylvania and some other states, California. We do have a piece where superintendents can now use this tool to evaluate their central administrators and principals. So it's truly a, becoming a school leadership evaluation tool. And part of this, and if you'd be interested, we're looking at an actual board evaluation piece where the board evaluates themselves. And we'd be, you know, thrilled and honored to have you as a, as a pilot group if you, you know, so choose to, you know, take that on. We'd be happy to have you test that out for us.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Curriculum extension class sizes. Dr. Martzloff, would you like to report on the curriculum extension class sizes, please?
Yeah, we've looked at our curriculum extension class sizes at all of our elementary schools. This was an item that was brought to board members' attention during some of our school visits to the elementary schools. We have found situations where there are curriculum extension class sizes that are above the limit. However, it's important to realize that during those situations, an educational aide accompanies certain students from specific special education classrooms into those curriculum extension classes to provide extra support, another set of eyes, another set of hands to make sure that it's a successful experience. So we did look into that, and I'd be happy to take any questions from members of the board to discuss it further.
Just to clarify, so you're saying that in all those cases, if it's above the limit, there's always a teacher aide assigned based on that size? Or is it, like, is that just protocol, or...
Unless the aide was absent for some reason, and there wasn't a substitute for that person, there should be an aide.
I just wanted to ensure that it was because of the class size and not if they traveled with a student or something like that, and their attention should really be with the student and not to...
Exactly.
...put the class size.
Yeah.
Are we relaying, and I apologize to cut anybody else off, are we relaying to these aides that during these, these sessions, when, when classes can be, say, 10 or so over, that their, their duties are changing to assist with the class and help with another set of eyes? Or are their aides still gonna be their goal is their original duty?
No, their goal is still their original duty, and I think 10 would be a very high number. You know, I think you're talking more about a handful of students, four or five students, something that's a much lower number than that in terms of number of students that are joining a curriculum extension classroom.
Okay, I asked that, and I don't, I didn't make a comment here or a note to the actual numbers, but I recall a number presented to us a month or so ago where I saw kindergarten classes hitting 30, 31. And I, again, I wish I could quickly pull up that info, I can later, but that's where I'm kind of throwing that number of 10 out. That's, that seems excessive to me.
It would be excessive. I mean, you're talking about class sizes that in some cases could be almost double what the class size is, so maybe I missed that in the numbers, but I don't believe that was the case. We can certainly go back and look at it if the board would like.
Okay, 'cause I know that was my concern. I know when we, and Heim's coming to mind here, Heim Elementary, but again, I don't remember which specific classes it were. I'd have to go back to that, that data that was provided to us, I think, two months ago? Maybe it was June, I think? Might have been July.
It might have been May.
Might have been July. Could have been May, yeah.
I'm holding some elementary class size as of July 13th, 2017, that I think you were kind enough to provide. And, you know, let's see what I have highlighted. In the K grade, we're at 21.5 at Maple East on average, class size range to be capped at 20. First grade, it looks like Maple West is above the 23, 23.2. Second grade, Maple East again, we're at 25.3 with a guideline of 24. Looks like we're on, teetering on the edge when it comes to Heim's average, but from what I've been told is Heim often obtains a fair number of students in that district that come in towards the beginning of school. I've also been told many of them are ESL, so it's not only just extra bodies that come in at the last minute, but just due to where people are located, oftentimes they're extra ESL. So as I'm looking at these, I know, I've heard a lot through the community about concerns about guidelines, class size ranges. I've heard us, you know, I've heard it said, "Well, they're, they're just guidelines." But I think the constituents, the community is very focused on those guidelines, thinking that we have guidelines for a reason. So when I look at these numbers and we're above, what does that, what does that mean? And can we assure the parents moving forward that when fall comes, we're not going to have a lot of classes with...
I think, you know, you're looking at numbers from July 13th. Are those actual class sizes or are they curriculum extension class sizes?
I think this is class sizes in general. I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to boil it down.
We just ran a new report, and I think I shared some information with the board based on a board member's question recently about class sizes at the elementary level. I think we're running with seven or eight sections that are below class size guidelines and only two that are at or above the class size guidelines. So if we were to start school tomorrow, we would be starting school with seven or eight class size, class sizes in different grade levels across the district that are below the board's guidelines.
Right.
However, only two would be above. I mean, we have to even that out as it goes. It's important to realize that it's always capturing one moment in time. We go right up until the end of this month until we make a final decision, so we certainly don't want to begin to move people at this juncture. However, if we get to the end of August and we see we need, for example, one more kindergarten section at Heim Elementary and one more fourth grade section at Maple East Elementary, we'll go ahead and make those changes at that time, so we're starting the school year off where we're within class size guidelines. There will be some times, for example, at the kindergarten level, the class size guidelines are 16 to 20. We'll use them as an example. There might be a couple of sections at kindergarten that are at 21 students, that are above. So that could happen. We generally don't break another section until more than the majority of those sections are above the class size guidelines, because if you did it with just one student in one section going over the class size, class size guidelines by one, you would end up with a situation where you'd be adding a section and everyone would now be below the class size guideline. So the range is put in there for that specific reason, to address that, and we continue to look at it from now until the end of the summer before we make final decisions. So I would just caution the board to just look at any information over the summer as being in flux, because you're gonna have not only families moving in, but you're also gonna have some that move out, that relocate. But once all those numbers come about at the end of August, we will make final determinations to do everything we can to be within class size guidelines.
Mrs. Leatherboro?
And just for clarity, just so I'm making sure we all understand, curriculum extension is referring to primarily art, music, and physical education? Is that correct?
I got you.
Is there any other course that would be considered a curriculum extension?
Library.
Library, okay. And those class sizes might be slightly higher than the gen ed classes, because you might have students from a special education program, which is a 611 or 811, being mainstreamed into those classes. Is that also correct?
That's correct. It could be students from a larger class, a 1211, a 1511. I mean, it just depends. It could be a portion of those students, you know, pushing at a separate time. Each, each school building does it slightly differently based on what's best for the student and what works for their schedule.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask if my colleagues here would approve of it, that we please get our class size report maybe for the next board meeting, which would give enough time to have the end of August put together and then possibly even the first week of September. So we can get a rough idea of class sizes between the various classes, but I'd specifically like to see a breakout of the curriculum, the extensions as well, not, not a summary. I'd like to see, say, at Heim, here's the kindergarten, music, art, et cetera, et cetera, all the way through. And if there is a class that's above and there's a class aide in it, what that aide is and to what that aide's duty is, is a 811 or et cetera, et cetera, if my colleagues are in agreement with that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving on. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution to issue the 2017 tax warrant as presented? Dr. McClary, second? Mrs. Van Sice, discussion?
We have a brief presentation.
Oh, yep. Dr. Martzloff, would you like to comment and give us a presentation, please?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Maturski. We've been talking quite a bit this evening, so, Mr. Maturski, please enlighten the board on our, what might be one of our most exciting topics of the year is tax levy and tax rate and the warrants. So please, Mr. Maturski.
Thank you, Dr. Martzloff. I'll be happy to do that. Every time at this year, we're required to have the Board of Education to approve the tax levy. Part of the levy process is to approve the tax rate. So to review how that process works, I have started with some facts, and the actual levy amount is the same levy amount that was approved as part of the 1718 budget by our community on May 16th, 2017. The levy itself is under the New York State tax cap, and therefore, being in compliance with that program, all property owners, owners in the district would qualify for the applicable tax cap program incentives, credits. As you know, the program changes, so whatever is applicable to their property. To review the determining factors on the tax rate, I wanted to begin by doing a comparison of the April tax rate projections against the August tax rate calculations to show how and why there are changes in the rate. So to begin with, there are three factors that go into the calculation of a tax rate. They are the assessments, or the, in this case, when we calculated the assessments in April, it was the projected growth, which we used the New York State Real Property Tax Department's percentage increase, and that's the same increase that was in the tax cap calculation. The equalization rates, and at that time, we did not have New York State's equalized value for the town of Amherst, so we continued to use what we had known to be in effect, which was 91%. And then the levy amount, which we had set, the board had set at $120,353,000. So as we move forward to the present day in August, in the end of July, the district received final assessment amounts that have been verified by Erie County Real Property Taxes. And so those, those changed, and they reflect actual, again, assessments. The equalization rate has been updated and certified by New York State Real Property for the town of Amherst at 100%. And our levy amount has not changed. It is the same levy amount that the community approved back in April, the $120,353,000. So again, just going further, on the April tax rate factors on that projection, again, I mentioned the fact about the levy being the same, so there's no change. The assessment growth is now actual, and the equalization rate change has resulted in assessments increasing for the town of Amherst at 7.69%. So if you look to see how that has affected two areas, number one, the total increases by town, and when we do serve three towns, Amherst went up by the 7.69%. Chicktawaga had a very slight decrease of 5.04%, and Clarence increased a half a percentage. So on the average, our total assessments for the school district went up 6.88%. The, the information on the right side there shows the proportion of the levy and the assessments that are going to each of those towns. So Amherst being largest, 89.50%, Chicktawaga, very small, an eighth of a percent, and Clarence at 10.42%. So again, now looking at the proposed budget versus the final assessments, you can see we had an initial estimate of $19.49 for the town of Amherst. The final rate is 1679, a decrease of 12.64%. You can see the initial projections based upon the, the earlier April number, what we were showing as increases. The actual school bill changes, if we follow that same process of $150,000 assessed value home, would, for basic exemption, would go down $290.41. If you have an enhanced STAR program, it's a decrease of $381.34, and you can read the numbers for the $200,000 amount. The key factor I want to... The key factor I want to point out here is that the Williamsville Central School District tax rate information reflects the impact of the assessment growth on the tax rate. And the tax bill that you're seeing does not reflect any change in an individual homeowner's assessments. So what we're showing here is that the school district did not benefit from the increase in assessed values for the town of Amherst. All of our levies remained the same. What did decrease was the tax rate. So again, an individual homeowner's bill may change, but the fact is, the district did not benefit from the change in assessments. So I provided the same information for the other two towns. Chicktawaga, again, went from seven sixty-nine as a projection to sixteen seventy-five, so they have a decrease of three point nine-four percent. I won't go over the school tax bill changes, but they're similar as applicable to the town of Chicktawaga residences. And for Clarence, again, their rate went down to sixteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, or a decrease of three point nine-five percent. Again, you see the changes in the tax bills. The reason there are some differences here is due to the, that percentage that I showed earlier. You have a higher percentage going of total assessed values that are going to the town of Amherst and lesser percents going to the other two towns. That impacts how the levy is distributed and it also impacts how these tax rates are calculated and a slight decrease in the percentages. So with that, I just want to summarize the tax bill information here to say that Erie County Property Tax has received these information. They reconcile two items. They reconcile information received from our town assessors. They certify those numbers. They then receive information that I submit to them. That information has been submitted. They reconcile and certify that. And then they issue the tax bills to our homeowners in late, early September. The other thing is that, again, the estimated tax bills that I showed reflect no change in a property owner's assessment from the previous year. So that is important to put down. And again, tax bills, as I said, they're all printed by the Erie County Department of Real Property. And the town of Amherst does collect the school taxes for the school district. Lastly, our tax bills are issued, again, as I said, in early September and payments are due on October fifteenth.
Questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Maturski.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the non-resident tuition rates as presented?
Seven, eight, not seven.
I'm sorry. Did I say seven zero zero? I'm sorry, eight zero zero. Thank you. I can count. I did go to school.
People are paying close attention.
I know. I know, it's on the job training here. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve and approve the non-resident tuition rates as presented? Mrs. Van Sies, second. Mrs. Bieger, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. If you have any liaison or conference reports, please pass them to Mrs. Seraphin. A list of the presidents for all the groups has been given to the board. I'd like to encourage you to reach out to the groups you are in liaison for and introduce yourself and confirm your attendance at their first meeting. A list of meeting dates is also given to each board member. Please let the board know if you cannot attend a meeting so that another board member can cover for you. Are there any other visitations or reports that anybody would like to share? Dr. McClary?
I would just like to briefly report about a meeting that I went to last Thursday. It was conducted by the New York State School Boards Association, and they go around the state in the summer and do what they call in-district congressional visits. And so members last week were from the New York State School Board and some members of the Erie County School Board and a few local representatives. And the visit was to Congressman Chris Collins's office. And, excuse me, basically, the members present wanted to bring forth to the congressman areas that were important to people on school boards and as stated through the New York State and Erie County and local. And points that were presented to the congressman were that it was important items that should not be cut in upcoming budgets, et cetera. Our school-based Medicaid, federal education funds such as Title I and Title II. A focus should be on public education as opposed to perhaps charter schools, vouchers, and that it is requested of Congress to refund the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education Act that has not been funded since two thousand and six. And with the emphasis talking about items in the new ESSA and focus on career and technical education programs, it would be nice to have funds for those programs. And just a general viewpoint of it's important to respect our future generations. And so that was the visit with Congressman Collins.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? No? Would someone like to make a motion to approve their professional development plan as presented? Mrs. Van Sies, second. Mrs. Bieger? Dr. Marslov, is there anything you would like to add?
I don't have anything to add at this time, but happy to take any questions from members of the board.
Mrs. Bieger?
I don't have a question, just a comment in how impressive this plan is. And I think I said it last year, too. I remember reading through it and being very impressed, not just by the content, by the protocol, the methods you use to decide the topics, the pool of speakers and presenters you have for our staff is very impressive. And I'm very glad that our teachers here have the opportunity for this kind of professional development. Not just teachers, I shouldn't say that, all staff members and administrators and the like. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Leatherboro?
On page four of the plan, under the heading "Provided During School Hours," number six refers to instructional support provided by the Office of Instruction. And then it says that it will vary depending on the need slash goal. And I'd like to ask about the amount of time that teachers are pulled from their students and how much instructional time is missed due to teachers attending this professional development during the day.
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherboro. I'll turn it over to Dr. Baylen, who will address your question.
Thank you, Dr. Marslov. And thank you, Mrs. Leatherboro. To address your first question, the instructional support, that's actually, as it suggests here, could be requested by either teacher or principal. And the duration does vary. It could be as simple as providing some resources or a request to come into the classroom to spend some time there, to perhaps do some modeling, perhaps. We do have instructional specialists in addition to our math coach who provide that resource for teachers and principals and school faculty members that might be actually training in nature. In that regard, that would be just a request that would come in directly to the specialist or the coach to say, this is my need. Do you have something that you could use to help me or can you come visit me? So really, it depends on what the request is. But our staff members are fully open to assisting in whatever manner they can. It's not unusual that requests will come in either from individuals or from teams or groups, as I mentioned. In terms of teachers or staff members coming out of the classroom, we have actually systematically tried to move away from a release day model. And as a matter of fact, for the upcoming school year, there is only, at least from an instructional perspective, one major district initiative that we began actually last school year with our phonics training. It had been a great need in the district, both something that we recognized at the district level, but more importantly, something that teachers and administrators had asked us to look into and systematically approach in lieu of self-selecting different types of programs and resources at the building level. So that's exactly what was done. Folks were brought together, different discussions were had, and field tests were actually conducted. And what was determined is that we would move forward with supporting phonics first. So we actually did a bulk of our professional development starting the previous school year, but knowing that we would have new staff members, both in-classroom teachers as well as our, what we're terming interventionists, those who work with multiple grade levels, so it could be ESOL teachers, special educators, or reading teachers, for example. We actually offered the training this summer, which quite a number of staff members were able to attend, but not all. And that's one of the things we have to keep in mind because if it is a district priority and something we want everyone to have, we have very limited options in offering the training. But what we tried to do is offer a few options for staff to take advantage of because what we also heard is summer does not work for everyone. So those who were not able to be trained the previous school year, and knowing we have yet to hire some staff members, so they're not even on board with us yet, those who could take the training this summer did. And others who already had family commitments, vacations, other things that they were doing, taking them in different directions, we did offer a fall opportunity. But that number should be very small in comparison to those we've already offered the training to. So we have offered a refresher of sorts, just to keep strategies fresh and new and also bring them together to see how things are going because now we have one year of implementation under our belts. And we've partnered with Dr. Siri and planning the training for the interventionists because for those staff members, they have different needs. They're not serving one grade level, they're serving multiple grade levels. So that training was actually specifically planned for and differentiated to meet the needs of those staff members. But the goal here is, because it is a district priority, is to have all of our staff members that I just mentioned trained so that they are prepared to offer these great resources to their students.
I would just want to add to that, that we follow the same approach with SEL and mindfulness practices. So we also have two days of staff pullout for those, for that staff development opportunity. We did the same in the summer, and we're offering another again in the fall.
Just in conclusion, all other opportunities, like we were looking at science, for example, knowing there are things that we want to share, we're looking at other models. We already have some plans to have, for example, Tom Bird, our instructional specialist, will go in and meet with teams. He will plan on asking principals for some time at faculty meetings. So we are entertaining many other options in lieu of having a release day model in place where teachers or other professionals have to come out of their assignment to get the training.
Thank you very much for your detailed response. I wasn't considering the idea that coaching, cognitive coaching and modeling would be, would fall under that umbrella of professional development, but of course, it obviously does. So it's good to hear that you are, as a district, moving away from the release time. Personally, as a teacher, I know the effects it has on our students, especially if it's a training that involves consecutive days out of the classroom, that can have a very large impact. And as a mother, just having my children, my youngest especially, would come home, you know, my teacher was at training again. And so that's something I wanted to ask about, and I appreciate your response.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Marslov. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. There are no personal matters to discuss. Dr. Marslov, would you please give us an update on the district's facilities improvement plan?
Sure. Our capital project work is progressing along nicely. We should be ready for just about everything for the start of school, even though we've had some inclement weather with being able to get our roofs taken care of at several of our schools. However, there is one area, as you may notice in the report, at North High School and the locker rooms, where we discovered some asbestos underneath the floor that needs to be abated. Therefore, there will be some locker room space that is not available to our North High School students right at the beginning of the year, but we will aim to complete that as quickly and safely as possible so that that space will be usable. We have put in contingency plans to take care of the needs of the students during the time that we are finishing up this part of the construction. But at this time, all other construction at all of our schools is on schedule for completion by the start of the school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve extending the contract appointing Amherst Security Professionals Incorporated as the district's security monitoring services as presented? Mrs. Van Sies, second. Mr. Metcalfe, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the construction project change order as presented? Mrs. Bieger, second. Dr. McClary, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carries eight zero zero. There are no special needs for student activity matters to discuss this month?
Safety, district safety.
Safety plan.
C.
Did I skip one? My apologies. You're right, I did. Thank you for pointing that out. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the construction? I'm sorry.
It was a presentation.
We're going to have the district's safety plan presentation.
Yes, can we? Thank you. The district's safety plan presentation, please.
Yes, it's an official presentation. It is an informational item. It is quite extensive in your packets. It is promulgated by law in New York State that this information is shared. From the district perspective, all of the items that you see in there that are addressed are prescribed in law. It is worthy to note that our individual building safety plans are confidential. Those are not something we share with the public or, you know, on the district website or anything like that. But this information that we're sharing with you tonight is public information that is required by law to share with the board and to approve. So we're happy to answer any questions anyone might have regarding the district's safety plan.
Mrs. Leatherboro?
Just because there's a bit of a history with this issue, can you remind me again how often fire alarms and phone systems are checked?
We do that on a weekly basis now.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mrs. Bieger?
Just a question that I had. There was one part of the safety plan that I, there was a letter home that was sent. There's a sample of it here. There was part of, it's a letter, it says thirty-two oh-five at the top, that says, "Just your parents at Guardians and that I understand the policy addressing threats of violence in school and the code of conduct summary." Is that something that is sent home to every student or just in case of if there's a threat in schools?
Well, my understanding is that if that is a threat, we have specific letters that we keep on file. Mrs. Wolf, our director of communications, has many of those letters. And every one of those, based on the specific circumstances, is going to be a little bit different.
Perfect. The letter does state, we've enclosed a review of the code of conduct, so that's good. So then if something were to happen, this is the letter, this is the protocol that would go home along with the.
Might not necessarily be that exact letter.
Right.
But it would sort of, in a general sense, mirror what's being stated there.
And then possibly.
Based on the specific circumstances.
Perfect. Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Mrs. Leatherboro?
And just to piggyback on that, what I got from that is that, you know, the district is charged with keeping parents aware of any incidents. And as a parent, I'm very pleased with the level of communication we receive whenever there's an issue. Last year, I happened to have a child at each building level. So if there was something where there. So if there was something where there, where my child may or may not have witnessed something in the lunchroom with a medical emergency of another student, parents are made aware. I appreciate that very much as a parent, because a lot of times, when you ask your child, "How was your day?", the answer is "Fine." And that's all you get. So if you have a little bit more information, you could ask different questions to get different answers.
Any other discussion? Great. So we'll take this one step backwards. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the, and adopt the district's safety plan? Mrs. Leatherboro, second. Mrs. Van Seis, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Thank you. There are no special needs for student activity matters to discuss this month. Moving on to committee of the whole. As per policy fifteen-ten, during the committee of the whole agenda item, any member of the board may request the board to address a specific issue or topic. A committee of the whole proposal will not be automatically considered a board action item, and does require support from a majority of the board. Proposed request will be placed on our next regular meeting agenda, and the board member making the request will be limited to no more than five minutes to explain the purpose of that proposal in the following month. Yes, Dr. Venator?
So, I'm sorry, did we approve the change order?
We did.
We did that.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Just checking.
It's okay. Yeah, I had to double-check all that myself.
Is it?
We went off-script for a moment.
It's okay.
So, does anyone have any requests or matter to discuss under the committee of the whole this month? Okay, nothing, moving on. Are there any correspondences to discuss? Would someone like to make a motion to recess the regular board meeting to conduct a goal-setting work session? Mrs. Bieker, second. Dr. Venator, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries eight zero zero. Dr. Martslove, would you like to begin the district goal process and continue with the twenty-seventeen-twenty-eight district goals, please?
Sure, no problem, Mr. May. I would like to start off by asking the audience to please keep calm during this entire presentation. As we do every year at our August board meeting, we share the goals with the Board of Education in our goal-setting work session, allow the board to ask questions and answer the questions as best we can, as well as allow the Board of Education itself to set goals for the board. And this year is no different, and I want to share some information. Our mission, and I won't read all of this, this is posted on the screen, but I do want to point out in the bottom right-hand corner, it was adopted in February nineteen ninety-five. And it also coincides with our belief statements, which were part of that mission statement that was done as part of a strategic planning process in February of nineteen ninety-five. And these continue today. Our first district goal I'd like to share with the board is to begin to gather feedback from Williamsville Central School District stakeholder groups in order to focus on priorities for the future in an organized and systemic way. So sometimes we hear the phrase, "Well, the community thinks this, or the community thinks that." And we want to sort of figure out a way to remove some of the uncertainty of who exactly is the community. We want to get some data. We want to get some qualitative feedback from our community. So what do we determine to do? We're going to look to do some surveys, beginning this coming school year. We'll get some help from a third party to do that, because we want to make sure we do it the right way, the surveys are structured the right way, ask the right questions, so on and so forth, and also help us to provide a comprehensive analysis of the data that's collected. Throughout the process, we'll use that information to effect meaningful change in decision-making about the future. So to just give you a quick example, the two thousand eighteen-nineteen budget development process, you will hear at community forums and at the board meeting podium, some people want to reduce class size, some people would like a traveling nurse, some people would like a school resource officer for every school in the district. The list kind of can grow and go on and on. But when people say that in those areas, in those forums, in those opportunities to speak to the board, is that really a priority for the community? You asked our community, if you could add one thing to the experience that a student has in the Williamsville Central School District, what would it be and why? Would it be reducing class sizes, as we heard from one of our speakers earlier this evening? Would it be adding foreign language, starting in kindergarten? Would it be more elective opportunities at the high school level? What exactly would it be and why? And to hear that directly from our constituents, our stakeholders, our parents, our students, our teachers, our staff members, our administrators, our community members at large. So we want to look to build that feedback in through the coming year. Also, going forward in the area of instruction, you've heard it stated before about enhancing the instructional coaching model, and looking at professional development opportunities for teachers, staff, administrators, and parents. And we want to look at ways to further facilitate increased opportunities for student learning, creativity, and engagement at all levels of instruction. We do this well in certain specific areas of our school district, but we want to grow that beyond where we do it currently, to other areas, other grade levels in our district. In exceptional education and student services, looking at, of course, as we always do, the least restriction, the least restrictive environment for children, and continue to expand on wellness, social-emotional learning, mindfulness, and student health and safety initiatives. All of those are critically important to the well-being of our students and the success of our school district. We want to further explore supports and structures to facilitate inclusive social systems. One of our board members, Dr. Venator, mentioned bullying earlier this evening. We want to make sure that our students are emotionally safe in our classrooms and in our schools, and then also culturally responsive learning environments. We have a very diverse school district in many different ways, whether it be in race, whether it be in religion, boys versus girls, there's gender differences and different needs of different genders. So all of those things we want to take into account as we move forward to best support our children. In the area of technology, we're going to move forward, the implementation of the Smart Schools Bond Act. We just received approval for Williamsville's portion of that, about three and a half million dollars. Whether or not that continues to move at a slow pace remains to be seen. It's only been almost four years now since the New York State voters approved this referendum in November of two thousand thirteen. We're also going to continue to explore evolving technology, infrastructure, security, and professional development and staffing needs. This is a critical area, as you read almost weekly in the news, that someone's data was stolen, corrupted. You heard about one of our local higher education institutions, one of our local hospitals that had security breaches of their computer systems. So we need to make sure we're protecting all of our confidential data in our district. In the area of human resources, we're endeavoring to hire a new assistant superintendent for human resources, and we want that person to work to continue to build a positive culture within the office. We also want to review and improve the hiring process for teachers and administrators. And I want the board to recognize that when we say improve the hiring process, sometimes it means improve the communication of the hiring process, so that everyone's on the same page and understands. When a school hires a new principal, for example, they might have not hired a new principal in ten or twelve years. So that's a new process for someone, so it's incumbent upon us as a district to make sure that that process is very clear for how it works, and what the different steps and stages are of that process. We're also going to review the changes in the structure of the extracurricular activities, including the selection process of different activities, and what the pay schedule is for those. In non-instructional support operations, of course, we have our new athletic turf fields, which I mentioned earlier, that are being completed. Also, we have a project with the New York Power Authority to provide more solar panels that we'll be looking to install, and, as well as LED lighting throughout the district to save money on the operation side of the budget that can be repurposed for other needs. We want to look at our audit, reserve funding, and budget development to make sure we craft a fiscally responsible spending plan for two thousand eighteen-nineteen. And we want to initiate a review of professional services that may result in issuance of new RFPs. That's something we're always looking to do on a variety of professional services to the district. And that concludes our goals. I didn't get into too much in terms of the activities, but that'll be coming to the board at the next meeting. So any questions on the district goals at this point in time?
Mrs. Leatherboro?
Quick question. In that opening slide, when you were showing the mission and the belief statements, it was, I didn't realize until you posted it, that those were approved in nineteen ninety-five. That was a great year. I graduated from high school in that year.
I was ninety-seven.
However, obviously, that was some time ago. With these surveys that you're speaking about, will that help to, help the district to see what steps need to be taken in revising those statements?
Yes, that is our goal. It may not be until next year that we begin a planning process for a long-term plan, but once we gain some meaningful feedback from our stakeholders, I think that'll help guide the writing of that plan, so that the plan reflects what the community wants. And I think that's critical. And it's an, hopefully, as accurate as possible of a description of what the community wants. So then, when you get into budget development, for example, down the road, you know, we've, we will have had feedback from our community on what our community is looking for. If you ask a student in middle school what they think of their, you know, for example, their Chromebook, or their iPad, or whatever device they might be using, they might be like children that I know very well that might say, "I think the district should sell all these devices and add air conditioning to the middle schools." And those are different types of, of things that may come up. You have to then discern what's meaningful, what makes the most sense to really look at seriously and pursue, and what's not. And I think that'll be part of further discussion.
I think that's really important, because we know that having collaboration when developing missions and goals is important for buy-in. And you want buy-in from, from all of your staff, but also all of your parents and students as well. And it's nice that we are now no longer in nineteen ninety-five, so we are in an age where the technology can assist us in getting that feedback much more, in a much more easier way.
I'm hoping with the survey portion of that, we'll look at multiple ways to generate the survey, not just in electronic form, but perhaps like exit surveys, maybe at district vote and stuff like that, so that way we're making sure we get a, a good breadth of, of community feedback and whatnot. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
I just want to comment how pleased I am with the goals, but most especially, the emphasis on the expanding wellness, social-emotional learning, student health and safety, and so forth. The whole project of looking at the entire student and some of the issues that, that had been raised, and I'm glad to see them towards the forefront again.
Yeah, I will echo that as well. I think the, the focus on, on wellness throughout is, is great. Obviously, I will ring my bell when it comes to two topics, which is bullying, and seeing what we can do to reduce that and put some metrics behind that, along with drug use, in particular in the high schools as well. So, and I don't know if that falls over to board goals as well, or if that's more here, since it's my first time with the district goals, but I, I think that may resonate with community members.
I would ask Dr. Venator, just to piggyback on what you said, is that you look at, although it is a drug, it might not often be thought of as a drug, is vaping.
Yes.
Use of nicotine delivery systems that students are utilizing at a younger and younger age, unfortunately. I think we, we need to keep that as part of that target. I think that makes sense. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. You have the board goals process and the twenty-sixteen-twenty-seventeen board goals in your packet. Are there any concerns regarding the process we are going to follow? Nope? Okay, let's review last year's goals and decide if the board wants to keep, delete, modify the goals for the twenty-seventeen-twenty-eight year. We can then add additional goals for the twenty-seventeen-twenty-eight if the board so desires. So on the screen, you'll see last year's goals. I know some of us via email were talking about this. I know I had mentioned that I wanted to, to look at keeping most of these goals, and I have ideas in, for next month as to how we can put better gauges on these. Let's start with the first one here, board, district, and community engagement. The current goal from last year was foster and enhance relationships while continuing to improve two-way communication with students, families, employees, residents, businesses, community agencies, town, public officials, and other board of, boards of education. Keep, modify, delete. I already gave up my opinion saying that we should keep all of these, but, Mrs. Leatherboro?
I think that's an important goal. I would sort of like to see the language modified. It seems very wordy. And I'm not sure, looking, now that they've had one year of tenure on the board, if, looking back at whether or not it was achievable. So when we talk about SMART goals, we want to make sure that they are realistic, realistic and achievable. Is it really within our means to reach the businesses, the community agencies? I suppose other boards of education, we did, if you attended Erie County Association of School Board events. I also was just wondering if it was necessary to use, to include the wording while continuing to improve two-way communication, or if that part could be deleted and have an activity next month that addresses that component.
I agree. I think we've done a great strides over the last two years on improving two-way communication. Maybe put an activity in there and take that out as part of the actual goal isn't a bad idea. Students, families, employees, residents, residents, I think we're a little weak on. Businesses becomes a little more difficult. I think we rely on the district itself to work with that, as well as the community agencies, town, public officials, and we address the boards of education. So I, I see your point on some of that. So would you want to drop? What would you want to drop? Let me rephrase that. What would you propose we drop?
Well, I just came off of a semester of taking school law, so our clients are our students and our parents. I think those two are important to keep. I think we also want, we are working on the communication and engagement with our staff. I'm not sure if everything else needs to be included, or if we, if it needs to be delineated, or if we could just use a word like stakeholders, instead of listing everybody. I, I think when you list everyone, then you're more apt to forget somebody.
Good point. Dr. Venator?
I would echo that, that sentiment. I think we can just say community stakeholders or community members, because we are missing staff, you know, teachers, students, okay, I see students in there, but it seems that we're missing. So I'd simplify it. I mean, we really want to, we're working on relationships and two-way communication with the community, all constituents.
I think I would like to see it with students, parents, staff, and community stakeholders. I think that's how I would suggest rephrasing it.
I like that.
I like that.
So students, parents, staff, and community stakeholders. Stakeholders, yes.
It kind of.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. McClary.
Say, if you just say parents. You perhaps are leaving out a portion of our community.
I think that's what I'm trying to encompass, though, with the community stakeholders. Yeah.
I think it makes more sense to say families rather than parents, because some students may have guardians or not necessarily their parents in the house.
Good point, okay. Good point. Okay, I see your point. Yeah, okay, change it back to families. Yep, that's fine.
I agree with students, families, staff, community stakeholders. I think community stakeholders kind of is the overall...
Residents, business, community.
And I, I think it's important that residents are part of this regardless of whether or not they have children in the schools. But I do like improving the two-way communication because the relationship really should be a two-way communication, not just us talking to them or them talking to us.
I agree with that. I just wasn't sure if that part would be an activity linked to a policy change or whatever other change, or if we want to just keep it. It's fine to keep it, too.
I think I like the idea of keeping it and then making it an activity as well, which could be the policy change and implementation. So, other comments on this one? So, we'll delete residents, business, community agencies? Yep. Okay, so this would be how this would be worded. And keep in mind, too, while we go over these, that between now and next month, you don't need to wait for the next board planning packet or whatever to come out. Start thinking of specific goals that we can obtain to hit this stuff. We will review in your board packet for next month, the, the goals from last year as they were stated, but start making notes on it, which would be a, a good first step. Student achievement and advocacy. Support student achievement. Take a leading role in advocating for children. Is that a hand? Mr. Meyer?
I think I was more so just stretching, but I happen to be thinking at the same time. So, I'll go ahead and, and take a stab at it. Kurt earlier had mentioned drug use and bullying, and I'm wondering if maybe this is a good section to incorporate it. Because you're talking about advocacy for children, you're talking about their mental and physical health as well, which feeds into, I guess, those tasks. I'm not sure how we're breaking it down in terms of goals versus tasks, but...
That's a third, a third bullet point.
It could be. I was also thinking, just with the first bullet point, to say, "support student achievement and wellness."
Yeah, I would echo that. So, I, I think the two categories I immediately am drawn to in this, in this area would be achievement and then wellness, under which maybe we could put those two aforementioned categories of bullying and drug use, including vaping. I guess I, and I like that, too, because that wellness ties into the district goals that we already have mentioned as well, very nicely. Can someone help me get a better understanding of what, what "take a leading role in advocating for children" means to you, and what, what I should take away from that if it's on there? I mean, if we're hitting achievement and wellness, are we advocating?
To me, I, I know not necessarily, I'm going to word this wrong, not necessarily allowing the state to mandate how we educate our children, which obviously the state does mandate how we educate our children, but being able to push back at the state and advocating for changes, like, for example, a Common Core curriculum was not successful. Well, why isn't it? Let's, let's push for change. Let's advocate for making improvements to the curriculum that, that encompasses and allows for and promotes for, and advocates for the better learning environment for our children. Yes, Mrs. Leatherboro?
I think that everything you're saying is very important. What I've realized now after being here for a year is that, that's something that is difficult for the whole board to do as a body, but is easier for individual board members to do if they take on activities such as what Dr. McCleary just did with attending a session with a congressman. Perhaps we take that bullet item off and then use it as an activity next month that might be an, an activity. So, remember that our goals and our activities are a little bit different, because our activities have to be the, the tool that measures whether or not we've reached the goal.
I'm not sure if I necessarily agree with that, but I'm open to hearing other ideas. I mean, I, I don't necessarily think that every single board member would have to do that. That could still be the action item for next month, that individual board members, you know, take an approach with, with, say, you know, politicians and stuff like that. Sorry, Mrs. Van Sis?
No, I know last year, we spent a lot of time on this, and mine were a lot lengthier, and then we cut them down. Like, I don't love that it just still says, "support student achievement." I, even though we have activities, I would like it to say more. However, the "take a leading role," I, I do, I just think it's so broad and it's not measurable. It, we need to have more depth with these. They, they bother me. But I guess, maybe saying something like, "attend," or, you know, something about going to maybe workshops, conferences, the PTA meetings. I know those are activities, but something that at least gives us more breadth, I guess, of what it is that we're doing. It's just so vague as a goal, "take a leading role in advocating for children." I mean, that could just be us as a board member sitting here. I just don't think it should be a, an actual goal.
Okay, suggestions on rewording it versus deleting it?
I'm in favor of deleting it.
I'm opposed to deleting it, but I'm open to it being completely reworded, but I don't have the rewording. Mr. Mecca?
How about tying in some of the goals that Dr. Venator listed and making that "our advocating for children"? So, advocating for children in reducing bullying, or advocating for children in reducing drug use, something along those lines?
Mrs. Bieger?
I think of advocating for children as doing what's best for the kids. We talked at a lengthy, we had a lengthy discussion earlier about class rank, doing what's best for our students so that they can go on and succeed with their future endeavors.
Right.
That's very broad, advocating for children, but I think it's what we do and what we should continue to always have in mind in this role, that we are acting in the best interest of our students. Take a leading role, however, I mean, can we just say, "advocate for children?" Or "advocate for student," I don't know. I mean, maybe the verb should be "advocate" rather than "take a leading role in..."
I agree with your thinking. I was kind of already thinking that, maybe getting rid of the "take a leading role" and somehow just formulate around the "advocate for children", or advocating, you know, it would be singular, "advocate for children."
Or take a, a, an active role, but I like your thought of just saying, "advocate for children."
Serve as advocates for children.
Dr. Venator?
So, I'm just going to maybe frame what I'm hearing, because it, it, you could, you could look at achievement. I mean, if we advocate and support for achievement and wellness, one person might look at that and say, "Well, that's, that's almost all-encompassing," right? If, you know, what I'm hearing earlier about the, the intent behind leading role in advocating for children was taking a leading role in policy, legislation, you know, something slightly different than maybe the intent of the first, the first comment? At least that's what I, I heard, fighting gore. So, I, I feel like we're, we're not putting enough demarcation between some of these. I obviously want to advocate for children, but I feel like that's why I'm a board member tonight, anyway. So, we're doing that. So, I think we just need maybe a little more clarity. I'd be curious to know, not to rehash demons of, of last year, it sounds like, but what were some of your suggestions providing more context around some of these?
Like, I know for, we ended up with student, support student achievement. I had something more of, what was it, college and career readiness. Like, there was more to it. I was talking about graduation rates and, you know, seeing the college career readiness aspect. And then we kind of chopped it all down and came up with just support student achievement. Also, something with New York State, you know, grades three to eight, the testing, seeing the results, or monitoring, or overseeing, you know, the results, something with that. They were just a little bit more, I know we, we ended up just keeping it short and sweet and then going with the activities, but there was just a little bit, I think, more that saw the direction or the vision of what our goal was truly about. Because this, I mean, they are very, very broad. So, if we're going for really broad, then we've knocked it out of the ballpark.
And I think the dilemma here, I'm looking at the actual activities report from last year, "remain informed on issues affecting children in public education, including but not limited to the legislative matters that impact and change." It's very wordy, and we have seven action items under this one specific category, student achievement and advocacy. So, I think the goal, and, and we're jumping ahead for next month, is to really home in on those activities and really put something that's measurable behind it. Mr. Mecca?
That's broad.
Oh, sorry. So, I don't know if this conflicts with what you just said or supports it, but taking everybody's feelings on this so far, so, "take a leading role in advocating for children by increasing student achievement," measurable, by the way, "reducing bullying," measurable in theory, "and drug use in our schools," measurable to some degree, I guess, by the risk, youth risk survey, "and by actively monitoring and supporting legislation," dot, dot, dot. I don't know what to, you know, actively monitoring and supporting legislation. I don't know what else you say with that, but...
I like it.
Bieger?
I like everything you said. Is that the activity that supports the goal? Like, are those things that you listed, for example, things that support student wellness, and that's what we would come up with next week, or is that the actual goal? And I'm asking that just because...
I think it would be...
Rachel tells me it's a goal.
Those sound like the bullet points for the goals.
Points for the goal. I think it would be one sentence bullet point for the goal, and I kind of like the idea of maybe going to one bullet point.
And I also like what Ms. Van Sis said about taking a stronger bullet point for student achievement. And if we want to borrow from the district's belief statements, we might be able to steal something from there. I'm just looking here.
Let me come back to you.
Do you want to say what you said again?
Want me to repeat it? "Take a leading role in advocating for children by increasing student achievement, reducing bullying, and drug use in our schools, and by actively monitoring and supporting legislation..."
Hold on, she doesn't type that quickly.
Oh, sorry.
"by taking a leading role in advocating for children by increasing student achievement..."
"reducing bullying and drug use in our schools, and by actively monitoring and supporting legislation that..."
In line with the goal?
Impacts.
That impacts positively, I don't know, that positively impacts.
Influencing legisla, maybe supporting or influencing legislation?
Yep. Yeah, supporting sounds financial, doesn't it?
Influencing legislation?
And I'd like to suggest taking all of those items that Mr. Mecca has there in that second bullet and sort of delineating them to separate bullets. So, perhaps I would get rid of bullet number one and have the first one be increasing, increasing student, increase student achievement, make it an action verb. Maybe we can add words to that in a minute. Reducing bullying could be our second bullet. Reducing drug use in our schools could be our third bullet.
Want those separated and do some bullying?
I think they're, go ahead. They're very...
If we put metrics, which ideally, you know, we can, to assert apart, I'd, I'd probably, let's, let's separate them out, if possible. That would be my bullet.
I agree.
Do we have to tie to these two action items to some degree?
Yes.
That comes later?
Yes, next month, yep.
Okay.
With that thinking, do we want to make student achievement one broad goal and then make wellness, which with the bullying and the drug use could go under that as a separate? And perhaps eliminate the technology piece, because we've done so much of that last year.
Not ready to get rid of the technology piece yet. I like the idea of having bullying and drug use separate, separated, just because you can attack them both separately.
And I like doing the, a goal for student achievement, or, you know, a title, and then maybe doing the advocating for children, however we want to put that, as a whole another one with those bullets underneath it. Again, I, I'm a big proponent of keeping the student achievement, because that is, as a board, that should be our primary focus.
So, you think that should be called out as its own goal?
I, I think so. And then, you know, advocacy could be underneath, because there's certain things that we have to do for student achievement with all of the different programs and district initiatives and the reports that we receive and the presentations. And then advocacy and the wellness is just as strong right now. So, I, I really think that they both deserve to have their own, you know, goal, because there's so many things being done for each one. Yeah.
So, so could it work that we had three goals, one, just for lack of better terms, is simple, one's about achievement, one's about wellness, under that is bullying and drug use?
But that's, I'm thinking that.
But advocacy from a policy.
Wouldn't you be wellness at this point?
I, I agree, keeping, I'd actually like to see the first one be achievement, the second one be wellness, and then have the third one be...
Advocacy.
Advocacy?
Yeah, true. Or, or even the community engagement, like moving that down the list. But I do agree that student achievement should be our top priority and goal.
So, that next one is wellness?
Yep, wellness.
Just the middle two.
Yep, well, that's okay. The legislation will move down to a third bullet point you're going to make here in a sec.
And then in capital letters again, student advocacy?
That'd be another goal, yep.
It would, yeah, it would be a capital letters one.
Insert another row, correct. And this one, student advocacy.
And then the bullet point would be the one that we just had you erase.
There you go.
Under student achievement, last year we had supporting student achievement, and we've changed it to increasing. I wonder if we want supporting in there as well?
Because if you support it, theoretically, it would also increase.
I know...
Right, like, because they already are, like, we're pretty good with.
And I know goals, our goals have to be measurable, but when you think of the different programs we support as a board...
Like, if we're already at 97%, you know, graduation rate, you know, to say, "increasing," that's going to be very difficult, I think. So, by supporting, we're supporting the district initiatives that are being done, you know, that the students are, are being affected and showing their achievement that way.
What if we listed as a separate bullet? If we kept, if we, we had supporting student achievement, and then we had a bullet under it, something about supporting continuous school improvement? I'm not sure if supporting is the right word there.
Thoughts?
Well, I have one last thought, not to keep going back to drug use, but I also think there's, in addition to reducing drugs, it's not necessar, necessarily just about that, it's about being a resource also to students that have addiction problems. And that's, I think, different from reducing drugs.
Mr. Mecca?
And along with that, we have to take out drug use in our schools. It's not necessarily the drug use in our schools that's the issue, so much as it's drug use among our youth.
Ah, good point. Drug use among our youth, good point. But do you want to, how do you want to phrase that? Adding another?
Well, if you were going to include it, I would say reduce drug use among our youth and provide resources to those with addictions. I don't know.
Is there a way we could, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is there, because I like what you're saying, and you could also say bullying has emotional consequences other than the physical nature that they may need some, some help and support with. There's also, you know, just inappropriate behavior, et cetera. I'm wondering if there's an, an element here of, that really speaks to more general wellness that we're providing, we're improving communication around this, letting them know where to go. I mean, one of the things Sean and I shared with you is we had a bullying issue with one of our sons, and when it occurred, we didn't know where to go on the website at the school. It sorted itself out wonderfully due to the assistant principal, because that's where we ended up, but at the beginning, we didn't know where to turn. Who, who were we supposed to call? It wasn't front and center. And so to me, that's an example of proper education, making sure that the resources are there for people to know that whether it's bullying, whether it's drug use, whether it's harassment, I mean, a whole variety of different things. And I think some of that stuff is there perhaps in, in the school system already, so I'm not saying, I might just not be aware of it, but an opportunity to potentially provide a, a framework or knowledge or communication around that.
So should it be a goal or should it be an action item? And next month we'll put it down and say, provide the resources.
I would, my, personally, I view it as a goal because when you talk about action items, I mean, providing resources is still pretty broad. What kind of resources? Is it a counselor in every school? Is it, I don't know, one eight hundred line? Is it, I have no clue, but we can bring people in.
So then we should do that for bullying as well. So reduce bullying and provide necessary appropriate resources.
So if you just make, starting with provide necessary, starting with provide becomes the third bullet point, and then it would be provide necessary appropriate resources for wellness.
Okay.
And then.
Necessary appropriate resources for wellness, yep.
I like that, for student wellness.
And then, once you get into the goals next time, or the specifics.
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe this is just something for the action item, but I know when we say reduce bullying, when I think of it as a board member, how am I and our board going to reduce bullying? Like, so this is just what I want to know. Like, could it be broad like that and then for an action we expand? I'm kind of thinking we could support or maybe promote district initiatives and/or programs that will, you know, hopefully, but us to sit up here and, and write down that we're going to reduce bullying and reduce drug use, I think we have to be really careful. We don't have that power and we aren't going to be, how are we going to measure that us as a board did that?
So.
We're supporting our district and the initiatives and the programs that they are setting forth that we hear about through presentations and so on, sources of strength, all these different things. That is what we are hoping, and we can take a bigger hand too, to make sure that things are maybe more readily available, but I'm wondering if we need to just be careful with that.
Just a follow-up on what you're saying. You could change it to proactively address issues of bullying, although I think it's fine as is. I mean, my layman's understanding is that you're going to attack the issue of, of bullying, and you're right, we don't know what the answer is, but we set the goal and then we bring in people that know about this to tell us how they think we can reach that goal. And then as a board, we decide on, you know, what, what we want to institute based on their suggestions.
No, I think, I think you raise a good point. I mean, you could, you could move it to support initiatives to reduce bullying.
Yeah.
If, if that wanted to soften it a little bit, but I mean, again, I'm not an expert in reducing bullying, but things like better enforcement, better education, you know, better knowledge of.
Awareness.
Awareness, exactly. Perhaps more extracurricular activities. I mean, you know, there are a whole bunch of things that we can, you know, look at other districts for and experts that I'm sure have done far more of this than, than I have, so. But if, we could go either way. I think this, this is a little shorter and sweeter and speaks to, no, we're not going to actually, you know, chaperone on the buses every day, but unless you really want to.
I think I like it like this. I agree. I think I like it like this because then we can put action items against it to, to help define it better next month.
I think though, wasn't Ms. Vansley saying that we add the words support district initiatives in front of each of those phrases? Is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
I don't think they want to though, so.
But you could argue for almost all of this, support district initiatives to increase student achievement, support district initiatives to foster and enhance relationships. I, I think it's.
Way is okay because.
I mean, it is, but.
We oversee, we don't.
But I think it's implied is, I guess, where my point's going with that. On all of these initiatives, it's, it's technically implied. We're not going to specifically do any of this. We're going to support.
Sure, I just, I need to know that we're going to address it fully in the activities because that's a really strong statement to reduce bullying. If someone comes up and says, how was, as a board member, how did you reduce bullying yourself or at one of nine? I will not be able to answer that. I would have to say, well, due to the district and the initiatives, these are the things that our district has. I just think that that's my, that is my role. I'm overseeing and, you know, making sure that what we're told is being saw through, but I, on this board, am not reducing bullying. I certainly would love for it to be, and I think we have a hand in it because we oversee what's going on, and maybe we need to take a stronger hand, like, you know, the awareness part of it.
Well, since we're all fairly new board members.
I have.
Can I ask Dr. Marslov his opinion? What do you think?
I just joined in real quick on one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
If we're looking at the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen district goals that we just approved, there is one under exceptional education and student services to continue to expand wellness, social, emotional learning, and student health and safety initiatives. I, I am hearing what Mrs. Vansley is saying, that we don't need to duplicate all of the district goals, and we can't, on the other end, on the other hand, act like we're all superheroes, that we're going to solve all these problems. So I think we have to streamline it a little bit. I like the idea of just saying, perhaps we even put them back together on the student achievement and student wellness, not to drag this on forever, but that really, our job as a board is to support the district's mission, and we do that by approving what's recommended to us at the table.
But, and I agree with that, but I also think though, we need to have some level of granularity and detail so that we can hold ourselves to metrics. Because, you know, as we talked earlier during our, our board member training, you know, the, the enemy of great is often good, and I think we're in a good district, and I think a lot of the past board goals have been very solid, but I, I want, I want us to have some stretch goals in here, ideally. I'd like to see us do that in, in, so whether you want to bring in achievement and then wellness, and under that, it's, you know, academic achievement, it's professional development, I, I think it would be helpful either under, under the goals or the activities to call out bullying, drug use, and then wellness initiatives. And I, lastly, I'll just say, I do agree that if, I mean, under each one, if it makes you feel more comfortable, you could put support initiatives to reduce bullying, support initiatives to, because we don't directly affect, you know, student achievement either. I mean, pretty much all these, we could say, support initiatives.
That could also be the goals next month too. So, Dr. Marslov, your, your opinion?
I think that what you're doing, especially under student wellness, should be more broad. It should speak to taking initiatives or supporting initiatives that promote student, students' physical and emotional safety while they're in school. And now you've captured a lot more than bullying or drug use. You've captured mental illness and depression. You've captured suicidal ideation. You've captured things that revolve around peer relationships and peer pressure. You've captured just about anything really in a student's life, and then in your activities you can speak to, we'd like to reduce bullying by X percent at each school. We'd like to see three new initiatives at the elementary level that help to educate children on the best ways they should treat each other, different character, education traits. Whatever it is, you can get real specific and granular and, and be able to measure it in those activities versus trying to put it into the goals. If you keep your goals a little more broad, then you can come back to it and you can fit anything under it. Because, you know, one thing I've learned going into my seventh year in this district is things can shift when something happens, you know, whatever that something might be. We might be going from bullying and drug use as being our two most important things, and something happens and all of a sudden, we have to shift gears and really focus on cyberbullying, for example, or, you know, whatever the thing might be based on what's come up amongst our students and in our schools. So that's just my two cents, take it or leave it. I don't take any offense if you don't change it. It's fine with me. These are your goals, not.
Appreciate it.
Districts.
I think that you make a good point. It's, I, what I would do personally, I would make a fourth bullet that says, you know, support other mental and physical health, or however you phrased it, I like the way you said it. But for me, the reason why I'm inclined to keep bullying and, and drug use in there as a specific bullet point is because I think it is overlooked. That's my, and I think that by making it a definitive goal, you know, it's there for everyone to see.
Mrs. Bigger?
I personally like support. I think your words are physical, emotional, safety, maybe even mental. We have something in there about mental, physical, emotional safety of students. And perhaps our activities target bullying or drug use. But bullying is also, there's more to that, and, and I do like the idea of the goal being a little bit more broad in the sense of supporting physical, mental, emotional needs of students. I do agree that bullying and drug use are important conversations, but I wonder if that is where our activities are rather than this is the goal. So I, my thought is that we would, but I want your feedback too, that we would delete the first two. The first goal would be support physical, mental, emotional needs. Oh, there you go. I was going to say link it to, by providing necessary resources for wellness programs and initiatives.
That also, I think, puts a positive spin on it. I shouldn't say spin, put a, you know, positive viewpoint on it. I don't know how you can make, you know, bullying and drug use positive, but it implies that we are working towards the positive goal.
Yeah.
It's proactive approach, right?
Much better.
Sounds good.
I agree.
I like the less is more concept. I think I said that in the beginning of this, so, yeah. Okay. Now, are we leaving increased student achievement under student achievement, or was it support student achievement?
Last year we had support.
So we actively want to see student achievement go up from last year? Is that a realistic goal?
One of the goals that the district has is to further develop and facilitate increased opportunities for student learning, creativity, and engagement at all levels of instruction. So perhaps we could just word it that we would support district initiatives.
Continue work to increase student achievement. We could, we could write it like that too, that would work.
Steal the words. I mean, these are good words here, so way we're showing we're in alignment.
Student achievement, creativity, and engagement.
Continually worked.
I love it.
Yep, I like that.
Engagement.
Creativity and engagement, yep.
Support district initiatives.
We could have just given us a few other terms.
A what?
They would have done it for you. Didn't want to deny you of this.
Oh, really?
Support student achievement, creativity, and engagement. Continually work to support, or maybe just straight up support student achievement, creativity.
I believe it was student learning instead of student achievement, because that student, student achievement line is, can be diff.
Compensating.
Right?
Right.
Student learning, creativity, and engagement.
Right, creativity and engagement.
That's good.
Right, yep, okay. Support, wellness is good, student advocacy, actively monitor influencing legislation.
I don't know.
Take a leading role in advocating for children by actively monitoring and influencing legislation?
I think the thought behind this last year was we were talking about funding and the issues of funds leaving public education versus private education. Now there's talk about federal funding, so I don't know if that needs to be a board goal or something on our minds, or.
I almost feel like it doesn't need to be a goal anymore either. I feel like last year, part of that student advocacy was about the recess policy. We had things about protecting parents' right to review state assessments, things like that, advocating for standards that include educators in the creation and decision-making. I'm not sure if we need to make this all a goal right now.
And the other thing I'm thinking too is like Mr. Schubert's comments tonight about class size, but that also, I don't know if that falls under another goal, maybe just.
And I believe it does with like student achievement. I think that's part of our role is that we, you know.
Support student learning by ensuring proper class size.
If we wanted to, that even could fall as an activity under budget, because when we're looking at budget development, we need to look more at how can we possibly make some cuts so that we can make class sizes a priority if that's our well.
Just at my arm, I'll concede. You can, you can purge it and we'll make it a action item, perhaps under achievement and budget.
Yeah.
Yep, delete it. The whole.
It's not like it's the technology one.
I vehemently disagree this one, seriously.
You want to add?
Yes. Can you define it?
Defend it, yes.
If, if we let our guards slip on this issue and we're not watching carefully anything that's happening on the political landscape, I think it's foolish. And I think it's foolish to sit back and say, well, our, our problems were ameliorated or taken care of on this issue or that issue, so we're good now. You know, it's kind of, it's kind of foolhardy, you know? We're going to be facing a barrage of other issues coming at us, left, right, and center, and might as well be aware of it. And we, and we have a delegate and an alternate on the legislative team for the Erie County School Boards Association as it is, so.
You know what? Thank you, Mr. Mecca, for bringing that back up and pointing it out, because you know what? It, it was very nearsighted of me to forget that we have a current administration in the presidency right now that's threatening a lot of cuts and a lot of things that could hurt school districts in a lot of different ways. I agree with your, your thought on this. I think this needs to stay as a, as a, as a goal for us to monitor at the very least.
Do you want to keep student advocacy or do something more like advocacy? Because if, if we're talking like legislative and funding, yes, that does benefit the child, but when I hear student advocacy, I'm thinking of what we are doing directly for that student for education and their achievement. Maybe we could just put.
Isn't everything though technically student related, student advocacy?
I just explained why.
I know.
My rationale behind it.
It's getting late.
I think that this.
We've already put the audience to sleep here.
They all.
I think this is a good goal with the top, with the topic of just advocacy.
Could we also just shorten it a little bit and have it start with the verb? Have it just say active, or just have it say monitor and influence legislation at state and federal levels? Start with the word monitor.
Monitor and influence legislation at state and federal levels.
You guys are so modest tonight.
Or monitor and make recommendations. I don't know if we really influence, but we do make recommendations.
I like the influence because if it becomes a major issue, then yeah, we might have to, you know, we might, like we did last year regarding drafting a certain memo. So.
Okay.
Anything more under the first four? Great, moving on.
Is it okay for you? Are you good with that?
It's, it's okay, but I would be a little more like on, I get your point, you know, we're not directly. not directly doing these things, like eliminating bullying or reducing bullying, or, but the things that we're doing, along with what the district's doing, is set up to try to achieve those aims, so I don't see anything wrong with us being boisterous about our claims of what we're going to try to achieve with the cooperation of everyone else. And I know it was also brought up that our goals were too much in alignment with the district or too identical to the district or something to that nature. I think that's a good sign. We, that we're, that our body, the board, is working well with the district body and the teachers and all the service providers along administrators along the way that are going to also want to achieve these same goals. I, I, I wouldn't be so modest. I don't know. This is my opinion.
I think you can have broad goals and narrow goals at the same time. You can have, you could put something broad and then have broad, what do you call them? Tasks or whatever. And then you can have narrow ones and have narrower tasks. So, I think we're getting caught up on broad versus narrow when we all kind of know what it is we're going for.
And I dare say, we're going to have a lengthy conversation next month with our action items, so please take, take notes, all of you that have comments here. Think, start thinking up serious action items that you want to go with these. Technology for board efficacy, efficacy, excuse me.
This is the one that I'm not sure fits with the other ones, because all of the other ones are about how they impact student achievement, where when I see this one, I read this as how the board is more productive and giving their work on.
Which in turn helps students if we're more productive.
Suppose.
If we get information in electronic format, for example, just using one example, on a more timely basis, say, as it comes out, two weeks maybe before the board meeting, three weeks before the board meeting, or something like that. I'm just throwing that out as an example, but...
Or more, more importantly, as I'm sitting here in this meeting, trying to scroll through 200 pages of documents, OCR.
Yep, OCR-ing it, which is something that I do personally.
Searched it.
How I was able to find other things briefly here during our meeting this evening to pull that info up. Nobody else at this table has that access unless they've purchased OCR software.
I, I think those are great points. I just wonder if that needs to be a goal, or that could just be something we accomplish.
Well, it's a board goal. It's not, these aren't student goals. These are board goals. So, that's why this still goes in. Go ahead, Dr. Banater.
I, I guess I, I see this as kind of apples and oranges compared to some of the other things up there. To me, this is a tool that allows us to do our job well as a board. I, I think, you know, many of these things are aspirational, visionary from a goal standpoint. To me, this is not in that same category.
Right.
It's, it's about efficacy, yes. Efficacy, yes. I guess I see that more as a, a tool than a larger board goal.
Mrs. Beeger?
I think we're working to also communicate and work better as a board and with the superintendent. And one of the things we just passed tonight was a new program to help us with evaluation, which is an electronic tool that we haven't used before. Last year, we were using paper pencil and sharing. And so I look at this as possibly a goal that should stay, because the use of technology may help us to better rate and measure our effectiveness, our effectiveness in working with the superintendent, evaluating not just the superintendent, but possibly, I mean, we talked about these goals last year, and then we didn't talk about them again. Perhaps if we're using technology or we have some kind of program to help us revisit and monitor, that will help us to perform better as a board. I didn't see us really revisit or rate or talk about these things again after this meeting. So, perhaps technology, not just for distribution of information, but just board productiveness or board, I don't know the right word.
Along with that, I think it ties in really well with the district goal, which was really creative, which is using technology to get a better understanding of the needs and direction that the district might want to move in. I, I think it ties in really well with a district goal. I don't know, rewording might help. I don't know if, you know, rephrasing it might be better, but...
I think the bullet under it could be rephrased. Enhance utilization, distribution of information electronically. I think we're starting to do that. I think enhance utilization, I'm trying to think this one out loud. Enhance and...
What about explore instead of enhance?
Explore use of software to increase board...
Well, that's, that's an action item.
Right.
Enhance, continue to, continue to enhance and utilize electronic technologies for board enhancement? I don't think that's phrased as well, but...
Do you want me to read the district goal for technology?
Sure.
Further explore evolving technology, infrastructure, security, professional development, and staffing needs.
I don't think that's the same here.
I, I think the header, the header should just be board efficacy. I think that's the problem. And then underneath there, the, the goal is, you know...
Thank you.
Use technology to better enhance board efficacy or whatever.
I like that, yep.
Something like that.
Yep. And then we can follow that up with the action items, of which one can be using the new super eval software, and another one could even be the, it was mentioned here to prototype the board goals, which uses the NISB process, so that could kind of encourage us to review these goals more often, as we should be.
Then, along with that, I, I don't know if we would want to consider, you know, some kind of board efficacy goal involving decision-making processes. It's not a technology per se, and it doesn't even have to have anything to do with technology, but there are a lot of ways to make decisions as a group, and we may not be onto the best one. There may be ways to enhance that. Obviously, retreats would, would maybe be one way of enhancing our efficacy. So, I don't know, that's just, putting board efficacy in there, I think, opens up a lot of other avenues of improvement.
Oh, yep.
Well, it speaks to maybe a board evaluation, assessment of the board.
Yep.
Are we still trying to fix that first bullet?
Yeah, it's not done yet. Use technology to better enhance, use technology to better enhance...
What about use technology to operate more effectively?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's very broad.
No, it is, and I'm trying to find broad, and I think you might be kind of hitting it on the head.
I think that's okay, though, because then our activities will...
Yep, yep.
Further describe.
Say it one more time?
Use technology to operate more effectively.
Here you go.
You got the word better before it as well.
And then how do we want to take Mr. Mecca's point, which I agree needs to be part of our efficacy efforts, both board evaluations and whatnot?
Explore ways to...
Improve board efficacy?
To improve the operations of the board?
Identify methods for increasing efficiency. Say that one more time? Identify methods for increasing efficiency. If you're going broad, is my take. I like that.
Me, too.
Because that definitely could, kind of, could encompass all of that. Mr. Mecca, identify methods for increasing efficiency?
Sorry, I just walked in. What was that?
Your board efficacy?
Second one under board efficacy.
Identify methods for increasing efficiency? Very broad, allows us to really come in and describe it.
How about effectiveness instead of efficiency? We don't need to be more efficient. We need to be more effective.
Agreed.
Okay.
Saying effective twice.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Identify additional methods for increasing effectiveness, then, because technology is one.
Anything else on this? Okay, moving on to the last one. Budget development and fiscal oversight. Create and oversee a fiscally responsible budget that holds, upholds the mission and values of the school community.
I like it.
Kind.
I, I don't want to throw a wrench in this, but I'm just going to throw it out there. Do we need this as a goal, or is this not three quarters of what the board is here for? Half of what the board is here for?
I think it needs to be there.
Then we need it, because that's...
Then it needs to be a goal. Okay, fair enough. Any other goals that we want to put down? So, this is changing the existing goals. Are there any other goals anybody would like to add? All right. Congratulations. We have our goals for the year.
One question.
Yes.
If we, not if, when we adopt this, is it possible to tweak them next month when we look at them when it's not 10:30 at night? You know, will we say, oh, not, I don't mean change anything, but to look back next month and say, oh, you know, maybe when we said this word, we meant, or is, is this like, these are our goals, period. We live with them?
Well, we are going to make a motion when we return to session here to adopt the goals. There's nothing that says we can't make a motion next month to modify the goals.
Not that I'm planning on doing it, but I'm just thinking, when we, when we have all of these activities, all of a sudden, someone may say, oh, these are six activities, and they're perfect if we change this one word.
Yeah.
If we change it, we'd have to go in and rewrite this and approve an item to change the goals.
Okay. I'm not planning on it.
Thing's possible, but it, it would require work.
Sean, remember that opening day, your board goals are displayed for the entire staff.
That's correct. Thank you.
Tweak when you're...
Thank you for that reminder, yes.
Thank you.
These are going to go up against and be presented here in a couple of weeks before we meet again. Thank you for that reminder. Last chance, any changes?
No, I'd just like to say thank you over there. It's amazing to be saying things and have them appear on the screen in, in reasonable accuracy and be able to see it. You guys are doing a wonderful job.
Yes, thank you, Siri. Just kidding, just kidding. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the goal-setting work session, please? Not all at once here. Dr. Banater, thank you. Second? Mrs. Beeger, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to mo, make a motion to return to regular work session? Excuse me, regular session. Dr. Banater, thank you. Second? Mrs. Van Seis, all in favor? Opposed? Did you say opposed?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the 2017, 2018 district goals as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second? Dr. Banater, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Okay. Abstentions? Okay. Motion carries 7-1-0. Adopt the...
Oops, seems...
Sorry? 7-1-0. Mr. Meyer was in opposition.
That's because I think we should have been more specific.
That's for the district goals.
The district goals.
Yeah, this is the district goals.
Not the board goals.
Going to vote the board goals next. That was the district.
Hey, I approve.
Okay, it's getting late here. So, for the district goals as presented, all in favor?
Mark me down as in favor.
Oh, okay. So, 8-0-0. Someone like to make a motion to adopt the 2017, 2018 board goals as approved? Dr. Banater, thank you. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. All in favor? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-1-0. Would someone like to make a motion to meet in executive session to continue our discussion on employment matters relating to a particular person or persons, collective negotiation pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, and current litigation? Mrs. Beeger, second? Mrs. Van Seis, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Approved. 8-0-0, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Dr. Banater, second? Uh, Mr. Meyer, okay. Any, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Our next board meeting will be September the 12th, 2017, with public session at 7:00 P.M. I look forward to seeing everyone on opening day, August 29th, in the North High School Auditorium. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Dr. McClary, second? Mrs. Van Seis, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.